Are you ready?
We're ready.
Let's see if I'm clever enough to do this.
You got it on, babe.
Is it on?
No.
And now it's on. All right, thank you. Now. All right. All right. I will call the meeting in the order of the village work session. We have a number of guests here for this meeting. I want to thank them and welcome them. We won't introduce the whole class, but we're glad to see you all here. We will have a much bigger audience. We're anticipating for our regular village board meeting, which will start at six. So we will hold this meeting. We will then take a quick break and start our regular village board meeting. I will remind people that even though we're in a very different setting than we are normally, it's a special occasion because we're anticipating more people than our higher limits will allow at the village at the village board meeting. So we're over here for today. We will alert everyone that although the meetings are here and I'll announce this at the next meeting as well, the same decorum we have at the village board will apply here. So no cross talking, no shouting, no yelling out. So we will in that look to begin our work session. And then we'll be able to get our updates and move on for our next meeting. So oh, bathrooms, if anyone needs them, are out kind of behind us off to the right. Well, actually the left, my husband had told me it's the other left, Jay's other right. So we will then begin with Callie taking role call. Okay, you're good. I would, excuse me. I don't have any other announcements unless Bill or Callie does. Then we will begin with a presentation by University Alliance regarding affordable housing program assessment. Alex, you're going to introduce us. Oh, I don't feel so bad. There's a little button. All right.
Continuing our partnership with the University Alliance and the University Year Program. We have been working over the course of the fall semester with the planning methods class, the UW Madison Urban Regional Planning Program to put together a, for lack of a better word, a demand analysis. So I'll kind of share with you here on the portable housing program that we've been working through. I know that we have a couple of trustees who may or may not be completely familiar with this. I'll just give a brief overview and then quickly turn it over to these folks to explain their work. So we took an affordable housing extension of tax increment district number three to fund this portable housing program. We split that program into two categories. One is, excuse me, to facilitate larger scale development. The second category was broken into four different programs geared towards aging place, accessibility improvements, urgency health, safety hazard mitigation improvements, down payment assistance and home improvement loan program, and then a local public service down payment assistance program. So this group has done amazing work in reviewing that, talking about best practices and putting together their projections on what we might expect from demand for this program. So with that, I will turn it over to them, let them introduce themselves and their work.
And while they're getting set up, I wanted, no, I'm not on, so. I wanted to thank the staff. I don't know that any of you realize how much work they went through with this meeting set up over there. And I appreciate it. Tables, chairs, getting everything the way it needs to be, microphones, visuals. So thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Alex, for the introduction and for guiding us along the way throughout this semester. Working on this presentation. So thanks for having us. We're excited to be here. We are representing, and in fact, we have our whole class here, the methods planning class. So we are just presenting today, but we all worked on this and it's been a good collaborative effort. So yes, we're from UW Madison. My name is Frankie Pobarlay. And we are going to present our findings and recommendations regarding the Home Reach Affordable Housing Program today. So we welcome questions. We'd love to leave it at the end. And we're going to have representatives from each of the four subcategories of the program presenting each of those programs in more detail. So we will on to the next slide. Oh, perfect. Thank you. So these are the subprograms. We've got aging in place, emergency health and safety hazard mitigation group, down payment assistance, and the local public service down payment assistance programs. And yes, I cannot forget to mention our professor, Dr. Karen McEntress, as well. So we'll move on to the next slide. So the Home Reach program objectives, as we found them and as we got some guidance through is to attract and retain residents to the forest, foster a sense of community, enhance the housing stock through these repairs, increase property values, support a sense of place and belonging for people in the forest and economic developments. And yeah.
Sorry about that. Hello, my name is John Warner. I'm representing the Aging in Place group. So we want you to know that aging in place is more than just about place. It's about quality of life. It's about aging in the medium community for a much longer period of time.
Hi there, I'm Michael Lufy. I'm representing the Emergency Health and Safety Hazard Mitigation Group. Our program is really focused on home repairs, like addressing mold or water damage and failing roofs that pose an immediate danger to the health and safety of the forest residents.
Hello, my name is Nick. I'll be talking about the Down payment assistance program and the home improvement loan. These two programs have two main goals, to support entry level home buyers by reducing barriers for entry and to improve the existing housing stock.
And I'm going and I'll be the local public service down payment assistance program that will bring civil service into the communities that is.
So aging in place is more than just drag bars and wheelchairs. It's about quality of life and things that make possible for your seniors to remain independent, happy in their homes. It's about technology. It's about financial planning. It's also about helping given their caregivers an opportunity to help them through the process in their homes. Unfortunately, the Home Reach program can only address the first issue, which is the home improvements components. And that's due to regulatory issues or restrictions on those funds. And you know, as we know, the graphic that's up there is the current aging population. So you can see that your population is growing as best through Wisconsin. So our team looked at the Home Reach program from a holistic perspective, and we determined the key metrics would, for the program would be first and foremost elderly retention or keeping your citizens in the community much longer versus going to other retirement communities. And we would expect that quality of life will will improve. The quality of life will improve due to safety of the households by using these funds. And we can measure that through reduced first responder visits and greater community satisfaction during the evaluation process of the program. For the financial metric, the village called out return on investment, we looked at it as a social return on investment, but we did calculate an actual financial metric of this. Sorry about that. We expect to see, we expect to see an increase in levy rate. We'll see an increase in overall property assessment and those values. And those based on the income or the investment of the home improvements that you guys provide for loans and grants. And we were able to evaluate several other case studies and we found that Revitalized Milwaukee was a great model that that capitalized on the collaboration between public and private partnerships to address the needs of senior Milwaukee residents. The nonprofit was funded by Milwaukee County and private donors. And it provides aging in place and minor hazardous home repairs for seniors and community in their community. Since its inception in 2000, it's been able to complete over 31,000 home repair projects. They have an average grant value of 4,200 per project and the typical recipient demographic is 66% female with an average age of 65. They have remained in their home for over 25 years. With the Revitalized Milwaukee program, repairs are not limited like the current Home Reach restrictions for the funds. That Revitalize allows for the repair of electrical, mechanical, and plumbing issues as well. So on the other slide, we talked about metrics Revitalized Milwaukee. This figure up here is a snapshot of their 20, of the Revitalized 2025 annual report. So let's see what the forest can do. You can see what we're looking at for the demand. We were able to calculate the demand based on households over 55 years of age. We came up with an expected value of about 1,985 persons over age, households over the age of 55. Then we took the AMI, which is average median income, determined 34.8% of that population, that 1,985 people, would be about 690 households. Of that 690 households, about 60% would fall below that 80% AMI value. And the remaining 40% would fall below the 60% AMI value. So 60% would be eligible for loans and 40% would be eligible for the grants. Of those households, we're able to figure that about one and a half percent of your population, that 690, would apply for that, meaning about 10 people per annum. We were able to come up with this figure using some of the Dane County, Dane County and the city of Madison figures to their community development block grant information, their cappers that they produce. And they produce about 0.53% to 0.67% of their population consume their, their aging in place components. So with that information, we doubled it, thinking that the forest is a much smaller and tighter knit community. Word of mouth will get out. So we think that'll be a higher volume. We capped the project at about $75,000. That's due to restrictions and the limits of the funds that were available to us. And we estimate the program will last about two years. We think it'll run into the third year and about, due to some of the project contracting and other issues. And if it does roll into the third year, we're hoping to be able to fund it with additional tenant closings and funds if it proves viable. Additionally, we average, we expect that the average loan will be about $7,500 and about $2,500 in grant repair projects.
All right. For emergency health and safety hazard mitigation, the increased home value post-repair will not only benefit the homeowners, but will also increase the long-term property tax base of the forest. Additionally, we recommend that these home repairs are undertaken by local contractors so that any money loaned or granted to low poor local homeowners remains within the forest and builds wealth, health, and safety for all those involved. We found that safer and healthier homes, homes that do not suffer from the side effects of mold or water damage, will result in healthier residents. We hope that the long-term health of the forest residents will improve as these, as a result of these home repair projects. For homeowners who cannot afford to fix up the problems affecting their homes today, who might see selling their current residence and buying a safer and healthier residence, which might be outside of the forest where they can afford it. We hope that this program will encourage them to maintain their residence here and keep their business in the forest. As for case studies, we analyzed the Wisconsin Community Action Program Association, also known as WISCAP, is a local weatherization assistance program for low-income households. They found that through their weatherization programs alone, households can save up to $400 annually on utility bills and see a reduction in respiratory illnesses as a result of insulation and updated heating systems. The Department of Housing and Urban Development's Office of Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes has worked to make more than 400,000 homes let suit as of 2020. And Detroit's Make It Home Repair Program, which provides critical funding for home repairs for low-income residents, found that 92% of program participants noted better living conditions and most were satisfied with their homes post-intervention. This exemplifies how a 0% interest loan, like the project that Home Reach project proposes, can effectively help to lower, can effectively help lower income residents. As for the demand of the Emergency Health and Safety Hazard Mitigation Group, we calculated 821 eligible residents. This includes all households that are making less than $75,000. This accounts for all small person households below that 80% area median income threshold, which would thereby, thereby qualify them for the program. Second, we expect approximately 40% or 328 eligible households to apply for the program as the Department of Housing and Urban Development estimates that approximately 40% of all housing in the U.S. is in need of health-related care. Lastly, we estimate that approximately 20 households can be accepted of all of the applicants, assuming a $75,000 budget split for each of the four programs. And assuming that each recipient receives the average cost for a home repair, which today is $3,600.
Hello. I'll be talking about the Down payment assistance and the home improvement loans. So currently in the forest, about 40% of homeowners spend more than 25% of their monthly income on housing. This is quickly approaching the 28% recommended maximum. One of the stated goals of the Home Improvement Loan is to reduce the amount that people are spending on extraneous home repairs. There are several metrics to consider here when you're thinking about the home improvement loan. We want to see reduced occupancy rates reaching close to zero. In addition to some indirect indicators of success, including lower monthly housing costs and long-term savings on projects. When you're spending a great deal of your income on just paying your, your bills, it's very hard to prioritize home improvement projects. A lot of these projects related to energy and water usage can save you money in the long term. But without some assistance, it's hard to pay those costs upfront. So that's where the loan would come in handy. For the Down payment assistance, people who are approved for this program would get a $10,000 grant contingent upon commitment from a financial institution for a loan, which they could use towards their down payments. This program would help reduce the barriers for entry for a lot of entry level home buyers. One of the main metrics to consider here is the change in home buyers under 80% AMI, which is what the program is restricting. In addition, it's also helpful to look at vacancy rates and the average time a property is on the market. Some of the case studies we looked at, we looked at case studies that tie homeownership to positive health outcomes, reduced trips to the emergency room, increased housing stability and savings over the long term, and benefits to educational outcomes. We also looked at the Detroit Home Repair Program, which saw a reduced displacement of people who engaged in home improvement projects, as well as improved health and safety outcomes. In a similar program for home improvement loans in Philadelphia, they lent 1.7 million across 91 borrowers, and they saw the 0% default rate after one year, 0% occupancy over 60 days past due, and just 3% 30 days past due. So based on those studies, 0% loan, which this program is suggesting, has a very high rate of being paid back on time. Based on the criteria of 8% AMI, as well as 120% assessed home value, those cut off for qualifying for these programs, we estimate that there are about 2,360 eligible households and would expect anywhere from 0 to 100 applications. Based on how funds are allocated, we would approximate between eight to 10 recipients of these programs.
And filing for the local service down payment assistance program, our metrics we looked at, social science literature. And we found that having civil servants living in the community that they serve can lead to greater civic participation in the entire community, higher worker satisfaction, and as well, it's strengthened the job sector for public administration because there's more word of mouth. So vacancies get filled with suitable candidates faster than it would have without those people living in the community. And it's worked before. So for instance, the Texas Heroes Home Loan Program, which is a loan instead of a grant, in this case, has helped 700 public servants achieve homeownership through that program. And for demand, we went through the five participating organizations and the full-time employees. We constrain that first with the percentage of households that moved to or within the forest in a given year. Incentive Bureau information. This would be further constrained by meeting those eligibility requirements of home value and household income. We weren't sure we didn't have an estimate for exactly how much that takes away from the 176. But with the total supply being around four people, so this $20,000 each, we're confident in saying that the demand is greater than the supply for this program.
All right. So this slide just shows a breakdown of the demand, summary of the demand that they all just laid out. So you can see in this pie chart that we expect this program to benefit approximately 60 households. And this is how it's broken down by the program. So return on investments, we found many returns on investment by implementing this program. I'll go through the financial and the health returns. So increasing property values through these repairs and through homeownership will levy revenue for the village. Incentives to invest in homes now, spending this money now is going to be cheaper in the long run than investing later. The, there will be cost savings by getting ahead of some of the problems that the housing stock has. It will also greatly reduce the burden on lower income households who need these repairs. So there's an equity component to this program as well, certainly. And we also recommend, will recommend prioritizing local businesses and contractors for repairs and such which would boost the economy of the forest as well. So help, higher quality housing and safer conditions is absolutely a positive health benefit. Any way you look at it, homeownership as well is associated with positive health outcomes. And we think that it will just benefit the quality of life and satisfaction of the residents as well.
In terms of social return on investments, one of the outcomes that indicates the success of the program is place meeting. Does this program make the forest a better place to live? Do people enjoy living here? Do they feel connected to their space and their community? Is the aging population, are their needs addressed? Are they able to stay in their homes longer? If not, are they able to transition to a different facility within the community that they can live in? Are investments in the housing stock, is that leading to longevity and preempted home repairs? Making sure that the housing stock is in good shape for years to come? Is the education system improved? Do teachers live in the community? Do they have students commute within to, to work in the forest? And then housing tenure and community culture. In terms of equity, we looked at lowering the barriers to homeownership, really kind of focusing on people below 80% of the AMI. Is their housing choice, especially for people who otherwise would not be able to come home buyers? Is there access to affordable amenities? Specifically, are people working within the community that they live? You know, does everybody in the community or do they live within the forest? And then programs, will that be, do these programs create a set of conditions where they can continue in debt and lean? Are they self-generating in terms of income and will they be able to help as many people as possible?
So we talked about social return on, on investment. Aging in place was able to create a ROI through a financial metric. And the calculation for ROI is revenue less cost divided by cost. Aging in place was able to provide a financial calculation of about 5.6% return on investment over a 10-year span. And that's on the loan value of the investment. The figure is based on the revenue value of about $49,000, and that's created from the addition of additional tax levies, return to the principal capital, and then fees charged during the process as viewed the well-known home, the Home Reach program charges to fee for application. We anticipate the cost of the program to be about $46,000. That includes the labor for processing the loans, for monitoring the loans, and then it also calculated the net present value at 3% inflation rate less the initial capital. We did not calculate or anticipate a default rate due to Revitalized program, zero default rate and length of staying in the house 20 years. So overall, we're able to come up with a real generic loan value return on investment, but the social return on investment is much higher and it'll be proven later in the program evaluations.
For emergency health and safety hazard mitigation, the return on investment is measured in a variety of ways. First, to ensure that the program is in a financially sound place for the village, we should see a zero loan repayment delinquency after one year. This will be a good indication that the program can continue should more funding come available with other TIP districts. Secondly, while we can't give an exact ROI, similar state and federal programs have shown tangible ROIs such that every dollar invested in life payment removal has led to a 40% return on investment. And every dollar invested in weatherization has massive energy and healthcare benefits for our home.
For the Down payment assistance and home improvement programs, we estimate around $30,000 in revenue after 10 years. This is based on the loans being repaid in full, as well as increases to tax revenue from, from piece of property bills. For the Down payment assistance program, we estimate the net loss of about $6,800 to $8,200 per grant. This is because it's a grant and not a loan, so it's not being prepaid over time. Under 3% delinquency rate is an indicator of, for things 30 days past due is a good indicator of program success. And then 0% delinquency rates over six days past due. Look for a 0% default rate and then just generally looking for an increase in the rate of entry level home buyers across the forest.
With the local public service down payment assistance program, return on investment, what we know is each year we'd be adding three to four public servant households. And for an example, what it could look like is, you know, kids in the community, they're seeing the local officers, their teachers, they're seeing the firefighters around town, as they'll become more familiar with them. That's kind of where it falls. It'll return on investment, that would want in the highlight screen.
Awesome. So many great returns. However, there are also some limits and barriers to the program. One of them being a very high administrative burden. We anticipate a lot of applications. So that's going to be a lot of paperwork and lots of follow-through with our dispense throughout the length of the program. Limited funding, $300,000, split four ways.
Um, limited funding, um, three hundred thousand dollars split four ways. Um, we also wanna suggest some sort of further criteria, criteria, rubric or standardization for how to prioritize applications. Um, if there's a high volume of them. And then just the limited supply of the four little houses in the forest. Yeah. And so these are our recommendations.
Awesome. So to ensure that this project can thrive and serve as many divorcee residents as possible. We have four key recommendations for the home reach program. First, we highly recommend partnering with community organizations uh within Denny County that have a strong history of working in housing-related projects like Habitat for Humanity. Not only could their expertise in starting the programs like these outlined in that uh home reach program simplify the process for divorcee applicants, but they could also assist in processing applications efficiently and even potentially allow for the stacking of funding resources by pulling money from the home reach program and from community organization funds.
So community outreach and engagement. So if you want these programs to be successful, the order needs to get out uh to your village departments, to the school systems, to the teachers. You can use a variety of media outlets like your website, produce a press release. You put flyers in community centers. You can use your own individual social media accounts. Or you can even use the announcement process in your monthly meeting to get the information out. We think you should share the good news as much as possible through the economic development office. And from your elected positions, you're utilizing funds, your constituents uh that improve and better your better your constituents' lives. Um, this is through the reuse of funds. You didn't lose those dollars in the TIP value. So you should share that with your constituents. And then it's all about where and how, share the information, tell the people that those programs are available.
And then to support program administration, when they get a little more efficient, we're thinking that uh we're recommending for state and I've combined any applications, so it's not four separate questionnaires to look through. And then we create possibility in some positions for that program to work with the group.
Um, and then also utilizing surveys to assess um public uh feedback, and this can be done either through public meetings or online. Um, and then uh as the program goes on, uh, using the ROI metrics that we outlined to adapt the programming. If uh one area seems to have a greater demand than others, then um adjusting the funding accordingly. And lastly, we recommend identifying any areas where uh you can streamline the process and lower the administrative burden. Uh, this may include adjusting application criteria, uh, creating a pre-approval list of contractors or any other area that might make things more efficient. So thanks again for having us. It was uh great to present this to you and we will welcome any questions that you might have.
Okay, we'll take some. They turned me off of our stuff. There you go. Alright, I have no name.
Very close to talking.
Alright. Alright, so we will take questions from the board um one at a time and um, it's about five thirty-four, so we will, we have updates to do yet, so we'll try to be efficient in our questioning. Um, and so let's take a few questions. Does anybody have a question to ask?
Yeah, I think, uh, sorry if I missed this, uh, program completely administered by the village with the forest?
Yes. Unlikely yes.
And uh, are, are there for each of the four categories, are there age requirements or restrictions?
Uh, no, there's no age restrictions, very much in age bias, but we use the value of age to calculate. Well, did you say age and then you say? I forgot. Now, yeah, now it's your turn.
Okay. Other questions? Bill? Any question?
So, in your research, uh, a lot of the communities were bigger communities uh that maybe the program, did you run into, again, there's uh programs in uh similar sized communities like ours, smaller communities. Um, can't talk to anyone about other programs.
Unfortunately, not really. Um, I think one thing maybe that the forest could do is to maybe try to do that, put the rundown for all the communities, but for the most part, we've only been where like federally established state, I don't know, like big national policy, there's already data in search of it. I don't know, anyone else? That's all we can say, but maybe this is an opportunity to do.
Okay, Jim, yeah, to Shidra and then Jeff.
Collecting all that, putting it together and incorporating it so that we can fully understand it is a hard task and we did our basic job. Um, probably the question that I had, I know it's not always able to um jot down like the cost of the aging and how it was hard to ascertain the cost of all the other programs. Um, just basically holistically what it would look like, because obviously all four things would be something that wouldn't go out at the same time and wouldn't be one and then another. So were you able to figure that out for the other three?
Yeah, yeah. For each of the home, the cost of the programs together.
Oh, is it administrative costs on, on putting the program together or the actual? So we just, we took an assumed rule of an average dollar value of labor. And that's how we were able to create the unit. So Alex is gonna be working twenty-two hours per uh, per, per program or per uh application, not really, but we assumed about an hour for a review each application. And then probably fifteen to twenty minutes per annum reviewing each one of the loan values. So you'd probably have to do the same process if he's burdened with, with, with that. So he'll be looking at sixty loans, they'll be looking at over a thousand application lists. Believe. Um, so we do have internships here, W, Urban Regional Planning Program that could help.
Thank you. Jim? Yeah.
So I'm curious that it was, I thought Philadelphia, I think that was the uh down payment assistance. And what I'm curious about is that it is very remarkable that there's like a zero default and zero say missing more than sixty days. And I'm just wondering if you are aware of like what they had for conditions? And I think that for the program, it needed to be at eighty percent of the AMI. So I wonder if there's like a lower thing or what other condition that maybe Philadelphia put on to get back to the default rate?
Uh, so the um Philadelphia case study was actually for a home improvement loan. Um, so I think one of the reasons it's so low is because there's zero percent interest. Uh, so it's a much more reasonable um monthly payment for them. Um, but they did, they did see that uh thirty days, there was a three percent delinquency rate. Uh, but then when it went to sixty days, it went down to zero. Um, I will say the scope of that um case study was limited in that there was only data available for one year, so I'm not sure after that if, if those rates continue. Um, but it's, I'm, if I had to make a, a statement about it, I, I would say it's because there's a zero percent interest, that's why it's so low.
I don't know, one thing I want to find in our analysis is that some of the programs mandate a financial management class for course. Um, to be like, it's something that's available for one of these brands. Um, so my plan is going for.
Did you have another question? We have one more, to Shidra, and then anybody else, okay, well, and we will move on and for the.
That definitely is the one I'm gonna make a final. Um, so the program, I know you talked about the length, that it probably lasts about two to three years. And then what do you foresee after that? Like what would be the onus of the village beyond that, just in terms of equity? Like we wouldn't want to start something in the community that we really can't take for the long haul, because then that just seems unfair, right? Especially if you didn't get the application or you didn't hear about it because more residents don't always get the information that they want in a timely fashion. So what would you say would be the onus of the village to make sure that one, we're giving something to our constituents that they can benefit from, then you're using it to go along the halls so that more and more people can benefit? The carry-on, the segue to that is interns, I love interns, that's our thing, so, well, we're doing them. What would be their so, like what would we be able to expect from the interns? And how is that worth semester to semester, right? Could you use the, the interns per semester? Um, because I wouldn't dare want to give the staff something that they can't rely on, I'm going for them as well. So it's all about being able to finish what you start and building with accountability.
So I'll take the first part. That's in the length of period. So when we did our calculation on demand, we figured that about ten would apply per year. And then the process that it takes to get the contracts approved and the payments out, because you gotta remember the loan. Have you got to get twenty percent of the down payment yourself to pay for the loan? You guys secure contractors, then once those, the work has been completed, then they go for the reimbursement through aging device. And that's how that works. So we figured that it takes a period of time, about two years to labor exhaust. The uh forty-five thousand dollar loan amount that was allocated. Um, the thirty, thirty thousand dollar grant would also take a period of time. Because those people that apply for the grant have to actually pay for the services first, then they get their reimbursement through the grant. And two years, if you can stretch it out and it makes it easier on Alex, I mean, part of this administrative burden that he can monitor that in a, in a lower value, then he can extend the program. Hopefully, if you saw the number of eighteen out there, it's because that hit over the third year. So if you've got more kids coming up for closure, and that's what we're advised, that they can reinvest those TED funds or TED funds. And then they can go back and refund for programs. And that would also give you a free mark, three-year mark to be able to assess what you have. And then you can put in a social return on investment for each of the programs. Determine that value, see if which was working, which isn't working, and then move forward. But again, it's about what you're closing on your kids. Um, and then what that value is. So I can't speak to the interns, but I know that somebody can. And I will speak.
There you go. There you go.
Alex.
I'm probably not a major in the city of that, it's just, it's all, um. It sure seems a lot of things. So, that's my thought. Well, it brings me to a lot of things. Uh, I'm currently a student of psychology. And so I think your question was semester by semester. And specifically, um, you want, honestly, any graduate student, we even volunteer with the capability of having real work hands-on. So it's basically how you want to advertise it. There's a lot of different, either in the field of science, it's psychology or anything. It's specifically how you want to um relate it to those graduate students to like relay the work with Alex. And so you basically want to create a team of people, whether it's in different disciplines, to allocate that work. And work closely with Alex. And so I think, I'm not sure in the early planning department, but um, in other departments, um, they sometimes have requests for the graduate students to, so it's basically contractual at that point. Um, and it can even happen over summer. And if it happens over the summer too, and you're in a graduate program, you can even give that graduate student like uh health, health insurance, premium university, stuff, stuff like that. So it's actually beneficial for the graduate students and some of the benefits for the forest too. Um, so there's ample opportunity with university, oh, like, maybe I'm saying that wrong. Or um, or with UW, or any other affiliated um university, so thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um, I think we got a good body of work out of you and we're appreciative of it and we will continue to look forward to working with you on this important topic for our community. Um, unless there's any other comments, we're gonna have to move on. We have a very full agenda. Um, but I thank you guys for taking the time to come out and share with us um your information. Thank you. Thank you.
So much.
Cause that group was put together with really robust work. So once that's finalized, I'll get that out.
Thank you. Alright. With that, we are gonna move on to our updates and then we will have a slight break. While we get reorganized for our leadership board meeting and we will begin that, that meeting. Alright, so moving on to department updates. Um, Bill, administration update?
I don't have, you know, this other than what's on the agenda.
Alright, finance update, Carol. Carol's good. We got the budget, we have to approve tonight. She said otherwise we can't, she won't, so. Um, police department update, Chief Olson, are you here? Well, then he does, probably have one. Um, public services, Judd. Great.
Well, this talk loud. Um, so we want to thank the community for their patience. Highway B is open and done. Um, so. With that, when one road opens, we have to close another. So South Street got closed Monday. Uh, they put the binder course down, um, and they'll find that final lift tomorrow, so that road will be open in three days flat.
Yes.
So, uh, that will commence all of our work for the year uh on roads anyways. Uh, the snowplows though are ready, so when the white stuff falls, there'll be out uh the dune. The lead pickup is still happening. We'll go until there's no leaves to suck or uh heavy enough snow accumulates that we can't get to the leaves any longer. Uh, and then we did uh successfully get notified from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources that uh we received a TRIM grant for phase three of the hardware stabilization project in the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Yes.
Greg's got enough days. Well, uh, we've been working with Reese, Trish, and Stacy on a um community art project at Fireman's Park. Uh, can you bring up?
You have to promote me in our, the.
So um, at Fireman's Park, we got splash pad boxes, I control the splash pad that were just white. Um, so we put some color to it, thought, hey, let's put a fire department theme um graph on them. So that was completed this week. We had a local artist uh draw these up, jam often. She did amazing job, put kind of the history, um.
I'm getting there.
History of the fire department and um, did it all, and we had Madison Rapids uh put it on there. Um, so that was done last week. So just wanted to share that, um, that's his Fireman's Park. Wow, we do, being there. That's a.
Thank you. Alright, um. Community development, Judd, uh, Alex.
Just really quick one from an awareness standpoint. So the CDA's project at the corner of B and Main Street. You will see next week that uh some of those buildings will start demolition. So just so you don't freak out that what's going on there. That's what happened. Alright.
Thank you. Kelly?
Administration? Uh.
Thank you.
Uh, the, I gave out candidate paperwork to the three trustees that are up for reelection next year. You can begin circulating your paperwork on December first. Uh, if you are choosing to not run, I do need you to turn it in on candidates. Uh, if you are choosing to not run, I do need you to turn it in on candidacy form, and that must be turned in to be no later than December twenty-sixth. Uh, and all nomination paperwork does need to be turned in by January sixth. The other one last quick thing, uh, I know there's a lot of meetings coming up that people are wanting to attend. Please let me know so that I can post a quorum notice, I do need to know two business days before the meeting. So that we can properly post that.
All right, and finally, my favorite recreation and community enrichment pro update, Reese and Sam. Sam, it is.
Yeah, so handful of things. Well, usually I don't talk very loud, so this is something new for all of us. But a handful of dates, uh, one with the Dragon Art Fair. Um, vendors sign up opened up on Halloween, right now we have fifteen single vendors and four double vendors. Um, we do have the shop local events coming up on November twenty-ninth through December sixth. So far, there's going to be twenty-seven, uh, businesses participating. Um, there also is going to be a divorce food fight, which is going to be raising food that's going to be donated. Um, that's going to span from November twenty-fourth to December seventh, and so far there's seventeen businesses, uh, participating in that. Um, another few things that we have coming up in the next few weeks is the holiday tree lighting, it's going to be December third. Uh, we added additional trees to the tree walk this year, so last year we had, uh, I think it was sixteen trees, and this year we have eighteen trees, um, that'll be featured in the tree walk. Uh, and then on December fifth, we have the candlelight hype, um, another special event, that's usually very well be attended. Um, and then just another kind of quick two updates, um. I know last time I talked about basketball starting to, I kind of get into that season, um, leading up to the season, we had really big interest in the K-first league. Um, we had like around thirty to forty kids on waitlist, we were able to work with another user group that runs facilities to create another session, um, so to make sure those kids can participate. So from like kindergarten to second grade, right now we have about a hundred and eighty-five kids are able to get into the programs and it'll probably peak around two hundred, um. So a lot of kids participating in sports this season. And then just one last thing, um, I've been working on, as you guys already know, I do a lot of the apparel stuff for the village too, um. I've been working on apparel stores for staff and for boards and committees, so I'll get those links out tomorrow, um, for staff, boards, committees, and. I'll purchase village apparel, play the bike, um, and then we'll have that, we'll get that in hands in December. I will get those links out tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you. All right, unless there's any other business to come before the, this body, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Once we adjourn, we will take a very short break. And then come back and start our village board meeting. Um, and so I would ask that everyone just be patient until we get back here, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. All right. I will call the village board meeting to order on, um, November eighteenth at six oh seven P M. I have some announcements, the first is we're almost at fire code limit. So people who can't get in will need to go home and log on to Zoom if they want to, to view this or attend. Um, and it's just the way it is. We're not going to be able to be here forever tonight, and it's imperative that we approve our village budget. So we will not be able to spend the entire night, um, on one topic. So just so people are aware, again, I announced it at the last meeting, I want to thank staff. They moved the meeting over here to accommodate you all, um, but it was a lot of work. And a lot of moving stuff and getting lights and doing all sorts of things, so. I hope you'll show some appreciation, our staff will work very hard to make this happen. Um, secondly, although we're here, the same decorum that goes on within the village hall applies here. There's no calling out, there's no clapping, there's no, um, bullying, there's no comments. Um, if you have a sign, it's got to go down on the floor. Um, and there's no one around to, uh, work with referendums. Um, there are people here on both sides of the QTS issue, there are people here for the budget and for other reasons. So I don't, I, I need you guys to show respect for everyone who's in this room. Um, with that, we will start our meeting, I will feel free to stop the meeting and end the public comment. If people can't respect those rules, and I know it's difficult when you're passionate about an issue. But we just can't not get through our agenda. The purpose of the village board is to conduct the business of the village, not to, um, not to just do this one issue. And we have important business to get through tonight. So with that, we will proceed, I would ask Helen to know a roll call. Um, and I would ask us all to stand and, and I would like, um, Alicia, can read us the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, in the nation under God, in the physical, the liberty and the freedom of the world.
Okay, our first item is our consent agenda, there are a number of items on the consent agenda, so I would ask if there's anything anyone wants separated out. Jim?
Uh, five point one point four, separate out please.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda, separate from five point one point four. Motion over, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. I have a fine point one point four, Jim, do you want to tell us?
I would just like the list of candidates that we're going to interview and eventually, or else I even list the questions that the update candidates as part of the record.
Okay, I'm having problems hearing them, so.
I asked if we could list the candidates that interview and list the questions that we ask the candidates as part of the record.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'd like to make a motion to include those and approve the, those minutes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes from the special village board meeting, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, did you want to list it now or add another time?
No, just added to the.
Ten minutes, okay, thank you, all right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Item six, we're going to move to public appearances and we're going to begin with item six point one. Um, public hearing of the proposed twenty twenty-six operational budget. And we have a couple of people who have registered to speak on that, and we will have them, um, speak first. Um, the first one is Peter Zondin. All right, good.
We're gonna take team this one, so.
Are you great?
I'm great.
Yes, okay. Oh yes, and also, before we take their comment, I need to open the public hearing, so I would ask. I would note that the public hearing is open at six twelve P M for the, um, operational budget, thank you. Takes a village to run a meeting. All right, gentlemen, please tell us your name and, um, we have three minutes for every speaker. Five, five, if you need a public here, not for public comment, so three minutes for public comment.
We won't need all that much, so I'm Pete Zondin, um, I'm on the, the library board. Do you need an address, I'm sure what else you need for production?
Yes. Your end, this is how it's on the sheet.
Um, I'm Greg Horace, uh, both Pete and I are here representing the library board as a whole.
Okay.
Um, we do want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today, um, this is our final budget request for the. Yeah. Uh, so if you can stick it out, that's cool. Uh, we're here just for one final request for the twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget. Um, I believe that all of the board members should receive the copy of our written request. Um, so as the board, we are respectfully requesting, um, thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars above. The one million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five in the libraries portion of the village forest draft budget. Um, we are looking for this, it is essential to addressing compensation challenges. Um, I know Director Berger highlighted, um, during the presentation, one of the key strategic goals to compensate our professional salary staff. Within the average wage structure for some of the library professionals in Dean County. Um, we've made some really good progress over the past two years to make it possible to raise compensation to compete with the service side employees and other libraries. Um, we do still have a compensation gap. Uh, this has actually recently materialized as we've heard the challenge with some quality candidates declining, uh, the job due to non-competitive pay. Um, so the request to increase the thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars allocated to close the gap. Um, we, without the increased library staff compensation, could continue to lose ground to comparable opportunities. Could make it difficult to retain talented committed staff. Um, we are noting this, um, due to increased programming, subsequent demand. We are anticipating an additional twenty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars, um, through reimbursements from the Dean County, um, at the library. So it's a win in there, which means that the final total of additional request would be approximately sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Okay, one other topic is, uh, it sounds loud, um. Is a special circumstance has come on, so some of you may know, uh, probably most don't, but one of the. Book vendors that the library uses, the primary vendor in this space is Baker and Taylor. Uh, Baker and Taylor's been around since, uh, eighteen twenty-eight, and, um, the library buys. Print books and other materials from Baker and Taylor primarily, one of the advantages of Baker and Taylor is their price, they, they cater to libraries. And materials come pre-processed, which means it has a, you know, a spine label and, you know, all the, the stuff that goes along with, uh. Uh, that saves the library time and effort, well, Baker Taylor, uh, shut stores like overnight. Uh, like a month, six weeks ago, something like that. Um, and so we're asking for a, a, a special provision to roll over unexpended funds for the twenty twenty-five budget into twenty twenty-six. Um, specifically for payment for material acquisitions, um, including a budget line for A V materials and print materials. This was necessitated by the closure of Baker and Taylor. Um, this was announced, this closure was announced after the library made a significant order. Um, the order was transferred to a new vendor called Ingram. But that won't be delivered or invoiced until the, the, this, this fiscal year closes. So, um, so the request is to be able to carry over those unspent funds for that purpose. I also want to comment that the, the forest area of public library board is committed to fiscal responsibility. While ensuring the highest level of service to the community, um, and we believe this unusual request is necessary to maintain the quality and consistency of our professional services.
Thank you. We appreciate it. All right, is there anybody else who, um, has wanted to speak on the operational budget? If not, I will close that public hearing at six eighteen P M, thank you. Um, the next public hearing we're going to do. What?
We're gonna present first, or that be over the hearing.
Before the.
You open the hearing, then we'll come and present.
Right. All right. Um, you see, it takes all of us to run a meeting. The public hearing for water supply service area plan is required by state statute, N R eight five four. I'm gonna open that public hearing at six eighteen P M. Judd and Greg and Craig have been working on this for a couple of years. And, um, so it's an important, um, item for the village, we've been working on, making sure we have enough water towers and other things. So gentlemen, be prepared, and then if there's any public comment, we'll take that.
So I did have.
Uh, there was a memo in the package, uh, at a later point, I believe, I don't think it was attached, but, um, they kind of outlined this, this is because of Wisconsin's, uh, legislature last year passed. Uh, N R eight five four, it's a statute that requires any municipality or entity serving or envelops a population with water, that we have a water supply service area plan. So we began, it was passed in June of twenty twenty-four, we began, uh, assembling the documents and the information we needed for Beer Becker to help us, uh, put those together. Um, this does not account for QTS, um, we finalized all of this here in the last two weeks or so, um. And so we did not, uh, that is not even a part of this conversation, just, and it has no bearing on why we're doing this at this time, this is a requirement from the state of Wisconsin. Um, so I'll hand it over to Craig Matthews and Darren Pope from Beer Becker.
Thanks, Judd, you stole most of my talking, but I appreciate that, um, just, uh, propose to be on the board, if you don't know me, Craig Matthews with Beer Becker. Been providing consulting engineering to the village for many years. Darren Pope here, um, he's the one that did the hard work, uh, he's a water resources engineer with us and a project manager at Beer Becker. Um, yeah, we're gonna just give a, a brief overview of this water supply service area plan tonight. Uh, there's a full report in the package for all of you to, uh, enjoy the reading. Um, and, uh, of course we'll take any comments or questions along the way. Uh, ultimately, um, we're gonna seek village board approval of this report, so that we can submit that to the D N R by the end of this year. Uh, which is, you know, a requirement of N R eight fifty-four that Joe just touched on. Um, so Darren will take over here in a second, but basically in front of us, we're gonna just give an overview of the report, we're gonna talk about. Uh, all the existing water infrastructure facilities that the village has in place. Um, we did an analysis then of those existing facilities and, and the L A's rate according to the current where it's to the village and forest.
Great, let me just interrupt for one minute, guys, you're gonna have to get out of the doorway, I got a text that said it's dangerous, so. Any doors that are blocked, you need to move in or move around, you can't stand in the doorway, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim, um. Again, announcements of the adequacy of the existing infrastructure that you have in place, um. We then did a projection of potential future growth, just so we can do some future planning for additional infrastructure, uh, for that twenty-year planning period. And then finally, there'll be some recommendations for potential future infrastructure, again, uh, depending on how that development plays out, so. Again, Judd mentioned that this is purely based on the current system, uh, right now. Real high level of future planning, nothing to do with the other developments that, uh, we might be talking about, so with that, I'll give it to Darren and, uh, he'll take over.
Thanks, Greg. So the, um, study starts with looking at your existing water supply service area. So the exhibit that we have up on, uh, the projection right now, uh, shows the current, uh, village's forest boundaries, the orange line. Again, the blue shaded area is the current developed area, the current area where water, uh, service is available. Um, and the village's system provides water to, uh, parcels within the village limits, and some areas also the town of Vienna and the town of Burke.
And then the icons on the image up there show the elevated tanks, um, and then also the, the wells are also shown, uh, by a cell there. So the second part of this is, uh, the looking at the twenty-year water supply service area. Uh, so again, the corporate limits of the village appear in orange there. This time the shaded areas that are kind of the purple colored are the, uh, projected growth areas for the village. Uh, so the twenty-year service area is the existing service area that was shown previously in blue. Uh, plus the projected growth areas. And those projected growth areas, um, were, um, developed from looking at the land use map that's from the village's comprehensive plan. And then also input of village staff regarding known potential future developments in areas that are likely to develop in twenty years. Next, the report looks at the existing village water system and what the elements of that. So the current system has three elevated storage tanks. Uh, there's two tanks that are in the northern part of the system and one in the southern part of the system. The southern part of the system was the former Tolkri, Senator District with the village had uh, obtained a few years ago. Um, there are four municipal wells and three of those are in the north system and one in the south. Uh, there's over four hundred and thirty-two thousand feet of water being that just reach the water throughout the system. And then there's one booster station and that's located on a transmission main that is between the north and south systems. And so that booster station gives the system the ability to move water from the south system to the north by, uh, use of a booster pump. So there's an elevation difference between the south and our systems. It also has pressure reduced down, which allows water to flow across the south system in the event of a emergency or fire in the south system. So those are the, the, um, elements of the existing system. Uh, the report also requires us to take a look at water quality. So we looked at historic water quality for the past ten years. Um, apologize for the, uh, table there. It's from the report. I don't expect people to read it. Uh, but the bottom line is after looking at all the test data, the village's water quality, uh, has always met the public health safety standards set by Wisconsin National Code eight or nine. Um, next, the fourth is that's water treatment and it's, uh, pretty simple affair in the village of the forest. Um, they have good quality water from the river here. Um, so because of the size, this is, you know, requires that you, uh, add, uh, sort of hypochlorite, which is bleached to disinfect the water that's added in each well. And then also well number six has slightly elevated levels of iron and manganese, uh, but again below water quality standards. Um, so, uh, polyphosphate is added called promethate. And that just binds up the iron and manganese so that they don't precipitate out and stain your clothes or plumbing fixtures. Um, so that's, that's always done for others. Yep. Um, the next element of the report is the, uh, water system evaluation. So we take a look at the well capacity storage in the distribution system and see how well the beach and current needs for the, the village. And, uh, every year the utility is required to report the, uh, usage of water to the public service commission. So those annual reports are available for us to look at. Uh, so we were, we reported ours, look at those reports for the past ten years, see, uh, what the water consumption has been. So, uh, and then there's the engine criteria that we apply, um, to compare the demands to the capacity of the wells and storage. And the village's current total well capacity is three thousand, six hundred and thirty-three gallons per minute. And that meets the current needs. Um, but if you look at another, uh, way to look at well capacity is called a firm well capacity, where you would take your largest well out of service. And that would be if it's under maintenance or if there's some mechanical failure with it. So it's kind of a conservative approach, you know, as you look at as well. Um, if that were the case, take that largest well out of service, then additional well capacity in the world may, maybe one more well would be needed, uh, in that case. Uh, current total storage is a little bit over a million gallons and is adequate for the current demand that the village has. Um, and then the distribution system, uh, throughout the years, the upper parts of our department does fire flows on hydrants throughout the system to see what the flow and pressures are throughout our distribution system. And, uh, those have always been adequate flows and pressures. Uh, so ongoing recommendation with the district system is to continue to gradually replace any, uh, six-inch water mains, um, with either in twelve or eight or.
And you said that again.
Um, uh, a, uh, ongoing recommendation of the add for the distribution system is to continually replace, uh, six-inch water mains, which I've considered undersized for public mains. And that's done when you reconstruct your streets. So you have street reconstruction programs, you, you're tearing up the pavement. That's a, a time when you then take a look at your utilities that are under pavement and, uh, replace them, uh, so you don't have to tear those up, you know, after the street was new. And so those times, those projects, then that's typically when water being is, is being replaced. So we're just recommending to continue that, that process with the distribution system. Um, and then as the developments come in, in third, many dead ends, we're getting a connection to water beans to, uh, to help improve reliability and, uh, water plant. Um, so bottom line, all of that is the system currently meets all the operational and design standards that are set forth in the, in, in Wisconsin administrative codes eight or uh, and, uh, E ten and E ten. Um, but then moving on to looking at the future projected water demands from that twenty-year growth, um, again, we have a little clip map there that shows the twenty-year growth here. So those future water demands are then estimated by taking the, the future land use areas and multiplying by the stored waters factors that's from existing areas. And, uh, we've got a list of, of those on the slide. Probably can't be those, but I won't go through all of them, but it's, that, that is looking at your typical water use, their historic water use and uh, looking at the area of land use for each of the different types of single-family, multifamily, commercial, so forth. And applying those factors to get the future projected water demand. Um, so then the future water demand, uh, as you progress through planning, the twenty-year planning period is going to be built up. Um, and we look at, they have daily demand, the maximum daily demand and the peak hourly demand and then look at those demands. Uh, and how the system can meet those demands. Um, so I won't give you the weeds up numbers, but you have that table that shows the progression. Um, then next, um, after projecting those demands, we look at the future supply and storage needs. So supplies come from wells and storage is relevant tanks. The top table, uh, has four rows there looking at the supply of the wells. And then the, um, the columns are the years as we progress through. So there's, it's looked at in two ways with total well capacity in the first two rows of the table and then below the red line is looking at firm well capacity, you know, where you take that, but it's all on this. So of course, the, the, uh, the table is gonna recommend about one more well than when the upper rows do as you're taking oral up. And so you can see that as you go from left to right, from current day, projecting out, um, somewhere around, um, twenty thirty-five, you can need to add a well two by twenty forty and, and house three by twenty forty-five, uh, considering the, uh, the total well capacity. In and then just comes up by one well, uh, if you look at the front row capacity. And then storage is the table on the bottom, um, in that, um, as you can see, why we need it, the year about twenty thirty, you're gonna start adding the storage. So, um, the takeaway from all of this is that, uh, we probably will be needing to add about two additional wells and at least two elevated storage tanks, uh, in order to, uh, uh, keep up with the demands that are happening, um, through the next twenty years. And also, um, one caveat to this, uh, these schedules is that, um, the study requires that you look at this report, uh, when you do your budgeting, you know, so by any way. Uh, and seeing if, if your demands are keeping pace with what we have in the report or not, uh, cause these are just, you know, they're, they're straight line reductions of population it lands. So things can vary. You can have big developments come in and change the scale of things. And so it's something that is, uh, you know, these numbers aren't set in stone. They need to be looked at, uh, that we have here. Thank you. Um, in the future water distribution, uh, is, uh, there's a master plan map that's in the report that shows moving, uh, in the areas where growth is expected. Um, and again, that recommendation, continue to replace undersized means is to do street construction projects. And then there's some guidelines that are set forth in the report for, uh, thinking about in water mains. Uh, well, that's it. There's a whole time to review the document, we're gonna leave it back here. That's the detail to, um, you can contact John, Greg or myself with the questions.
Thank you. When we, um, act on this, we'll take questions. Okay.
So just as a reminder, we will, uh, accept comments on this document. It's available, um, I think we have it on the gates of forest, um, down with it there tomorrow. Um, if you were to review that, that document, we are accepting public comment. We plan to bring this back at the December second board meeting. Um, so if you don't have comments tonight, we'll take those into account and, uh, back those in. Uh, we, if necessary, could bring this back December seventeen, we have a lot of comments that we need to filter through. Um, but I'd really like that we've done this on the summer second, submitted to the D N R in plenty of time for compliance with their requirement by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Um, with that, do you have anything else, Judd?
I won't for long, but yeah, the presentation, sorry.
Um, we appreciate that. We need to hear it though, so thank you. Um, what we are planning to do is add board questions and discussion when this comes back to the board. Um, so that we have some time and I think unless there's anything else, we will close the public hearing on this matter. Is there anything else?
Is there anyone, is there anyone here who wants to talk?
What?
Is there anyone here that wants to talk on this?
Well, I have two unidentified things, but I don't have anyone who is signed up to talk on this, so.
One question.
When we discuss it. Okay. All right, thank you. And with that, we'll close this public hearing. I encourage people who have comments to send their comments in on engaged reports or to Judd at Village Hall. Um, and I appreciate that. We may have questions for you guys. It was a little hard to hear, so thank you. Um, I have been notified again that we have to kind of move the crowd that way. And there is some ordering down there, so get friendly, um, and keep the door clear.
Yeah.
I said. And there's some room over here, so, um, please take that. What are you looking for?
I'm on the yeses.
Huh?
And that's who is.
The yes, um, the yes, I think, to speak. Okay, thank you. Oh, um, with that, we will, I did just get notified that we have to be out of here by ten fifteen. And we have other business to do. So as we enter this public hearing session, I'm gonna ask that you already had a chance to address us, that you let others go. We will call people up according to how they registered, but, um, this is three minutes of civil conversation. No threats, no name calling, no, you know, eh, nothing. Just if you have comments that are constructive, other that we haven't heard before, then please come up when your name is called. If you're repeating what the person said before you, um, you might consider just joining like the library crew that has been staying, you know, with you together. So with that, um, I'm going to go open the public appearance section on the QTS matter. After that, we will have the QTS, um, presentation. Um, and we will then, um, proceed with the rest of our meeting. So, um, I, I just want people to know if you think I'm being difficult on this one. Um, it's because we do have to pass the budget tonight, um, because we can't get our tax bills out unless we pass the budget tonight. So I know that sounds awful, but we need to do it. So, all right, with that, we will begin. I'm going to call people um, from those who have signed up, um, to speak and I will then, um, draw from one who is here to, to support it and one who is here to oppose it. So we will draw from both so that it's fair chance for everyone. So with that, I would like to begin, and if I don't say your name right, please just correct it when you get up and don't hold me accountable. Um, all right. I have a note here. Okay. With that, I would like to begin with Fatima Hernandez.
Okay.
None of that, guys.
Hi, my name is Fatima Hernandez. My address is eight two and I'm from the forest. I've lived in the forest for over twenty years, which has the rest of my family. Over the years, I've seen the town grow and develop little by little. While I've been happy with the majority, the village has changes as the years have gone by. This is one change that I'm not happy with, specifically the data center. The forest is a simple town who surrounds itself with farms, nature and simplicity of it all, only twenty or so minutes away from the capital. So imagine my horror when I heard a data center was being proposed for here. I'm a big advocate for no A I, no big data centers, none of it. I've seen A I grow and grow to become this ugly ball of misinformation, lies and destruction. People left and right being deceived by what they see all because of A I. I'm an artist and I plan to be one and continue to be one for the rest of my life. So it breaks my heart knowing that in a possible future, this very town that I love will end up becoming a place that takes away my ability and my opportunities to create and actually have a job. All because people are unfortunately not willing to pick up a pencil and learn how to draw. Besides my personal problems, there's the other issues I've seen and you guys have probably heard. Collusion of the local sources of fresh water, noise and light disturbances to the surrounding communities of data centers. I've tried warning people about it, uh, long before this, I was informed about QTS, was attempting to build a center here. And I'm glad people are taking action, listening and seeing. What benefits will we get from this specifically? Sure, a few construction jobs, but then what? We gain nothing from this, not really much, a few jobs here and there. And then afterwards, what else? And we will continue to see, you know, benefits as townspeople. I ask the board members to consider if you allow this center to be built, will you be okay with villagers possibly moving away? People looking for another place to call home because you allowed this. Personally, I do plan to move away when the data center is built. I know my sister who is here today, she also plans to move away, same with my family and a lot of people that I know. I have a job at Elamax Shishale, which um, is against the data center. Um, will you guys be okay with angry, distrustful villagers that you swore to look after? Because I know as board members, you guys are supposed to look out for us and take care of us. So please consider and vote against the QTS data center for your villagers, for your community, for nature and future artists, future artists and creators. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to, um, call, um, James Sullivan and then I'm gonna request that Trinity of Well, of Battle, of the Deal be ready right after that.
Members of the council and residents of DeForest.
Excuse me, could you please state your name and address?
Sorry.
Please first.
My name's James Sullivan. My address is, uh, six, six, five, two, North Town Road, Windsor, Wisconsin. Um, members of the council, residents of the forest. I own a business here in town and I've spent years building projects in this community. I care about the, the direction DeForest is heading. That's why I believe the new data center is an opportunity we shouldn't overlook. First, this will bring real jobs to our residents, good construction jobs during the build and steady long-term positions once facility opens. These are the kinds of opportunities that help families stay and grow right here at home. It will also create meaningful tax revenue, allowing us to better fund schools, roads and services without increasing the burden on local taxpayers. We shouldn't underestimate the impact on local businesses, the workforce involved in construction and ongoing operations. They will eat at our restaurants, stay in our lodging, shop at our stores, rely on nearby suppliers and service providers. That steady stream of activity can make a noticeable difference for small businesses like myself that depend on consistent. That steady stream of activity can make a noticeable difference for small businesses like myself that depend on consistent local spending. I know many of us have concerns about water usage, air quality and power demand, and those concerns deserve clear answers. Modern data centers use highly efficient cooling centers. You know, that when water is used, it's carefully monitored and limited. The project is expected to meet those high efficiency standards. Data centers are quiet neighbors. They do not produce industrial emissions. And their backup generators, often the biggest concern, run only for testing and emergencies under strict environmental like regular regulations, excuse me. While data centers require significant electricity, they also invest in energy efficiency and grid improvements that strengthen reliability for the entire community. Many companies also partner with utilities on renewable energy to reduce their overall impact. Along with these safeguards, the project will bring better fiber connectivity and improved infrastructure for the residents and local businesses that will benefit from for years. In short, this data center gives the forest a chance to grow responsibly, sustainably, in a way that supports the people and businesses that make this town what it is. I hope we can look at the full picture and see the long-term value this project offers to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Trinity.
Hi, I'm Trinity Ullnail. Address is five sixteen to Forest Street. I have addressed you guys before, so I will keep it very short this time. People say that they are using, well, going to be providing local jobs when in fact there's already survey companies from, I don't know if you consider this local, I don't. La Crosse, Wisconsin, doing their surveying for QTS already. I know this because I have spoken to them as well as my mother who has seen them surveying the land that was not within the proposed limits for QTS. So that's just all I'm going to say. They say they're using local. I consider the forest local. I don't consider La Crosse local.
Thank you. The next up will be Darnell Reynolds. And then Teresa Hibner, if you can be prepared to come up right after that.
Good evening to the village board of the forest, community, neighbors and guests. My name is Darnell Reynolds and I represent the Union Eye Workers, Local Three Eighty Three in Madison, Wisconsin. I wanted to thank you for allowing me the time to speak with you all tonight and hopefully I can provide a little light into the cloudiness that this subject has brought. I wanted to take the time tonight to stress my support of the data center supposed by QTS in the forest area. Now, I know a lot of us came here to debate the pros and cons of what a data center does and doesn't do to the environment. And that's because any proposition is typically and always made some type of opposition. So I do want to, I do want to debate, however, what this project can do for the community. For example, look at where we are tonight. The Forest High School, which I assisted in building every one of the foundations with Fendor back in twenty twenty one. And this couldn't have been possible without someone looking ahead and one key word that we're all missing, growth. I can tell you what I knew about growth growing up, and yes, I am an A D S baby for those who go home. I grew up watching the Flintstones and the Jetsons. Where the Flintstones focus on the lives of what we had and the Jetsons focus on the lives that are to be. Right now, if you take a close look around, we are nearing that time of the Jetsons era. Something that someone saw forthcoming and is trying to get ahead of the inevitable change. And with that change comes a huge amount of opportunity. With the promise of nearly fifty million dollars to the city, this is an opportunity to grow the community. With the promise of nearly five thousand construction jobs, this is also an opportunity to grow our workforce in the building trades. The building trades, that is, if I might add once again and reiterate, provided the very building that we're in tonight. On behalf of the building trades and especially myself, I'm asking that you grant approval of this QTS project. Create jobs that can not only stimulate the growth to the workforce environment, but also to the forest and its surrounding areas. Help us, help you. Let's build this community together and be a part of the change that is inevitably going to be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Darnell. Next up is going to be Teresa Hibner and then after that, Austin Lodgett.
I'm Teresa Hibner, seven, five, thirty nine, Glen Road.
Speak closely to the mind, please. Thank you.
Okay. I know we've all heard about the enormous amount of electricity and power that these cooling systems use. I have huge concerns on sustainability of our systems to be able to give the power that we need and the amount of water. We just listened to the Water Gentlemen say that we have a million gallons of water. However, these data centers use three to five million gallons a day. And yes, they're saying they have this system that once operational, okay, what's the definition of once operational? Will not be using our, our water. But again, what's the definition of once operational? So I have major concerns about that. And the municipal water systems are meant for intermittent water use. They're not meant for data, data centers that need a consistent amount of water. I also have concerns, once it is operational, that water system. A lot of times they use chemicals to prevent bacteria growth within the system and rust. What about the discharge that's going to be going into our supply systems into the the waterways? And not only that, their servers and hardwares have a short lifespan, three to five years. And once those are done, they need to be recycled and they need to be recycled properly and they are highly toxic if they are not recycled properly. And in regards to the construction jobs, I understand that they will bring a lot of jobs temporarily. Once it's functional, they have very few permanent full-time jobs. And that is easily being able to find out through payroll data that they do not employ a number of long-term permanent jobs. So I just ask that the village really look at this. I understand fifty million dollars seems like a lot of money. But in regards to the, the community and the pollution and the water damage that may do, may be done. Look at Flint, Michigan. Flint, Michigan and their poison water system has cost over a billion dollars and counting to clean up. Fifty million dollars is nothing in comparison to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Austin Lodgett and then we will take Cassandra Summerfield, so be ready.
Hello, my name is Austin Lodgett, six, six, five, two North Town Road. I moved here not too long ago from the state of Maine. I've specialized in machining, manufacturing, fabrication. I moved here from my home state because of the lack of work. My area was dying. Younger generations moving away to pursue careers not found at home. As a result, this leaving towns like my own home with no growing families to keep the areas alive, taxes rise, conditions start to go along, peoples are pushed to seek other new alternative lives. I think that we should be joyful that a project like this data center is being offered in the area by a company that wants to support the local area. New careers that will allow upcoming generations to pursue and thrive here right at home. As well as even a new influx of traffic that could potentially allow others outside of the data center to take advantage of. With proper planning, collaboration with the village and QTS, there is such a high potential. There is such high potential to be able to keep this area beautiful, profitable and humble. We're not talking about a mine or nor a miner. We're talking about a smart and environmentally aware business that we all utilize on a day-to-day basis more than most probably even realize. Using social medias, streaming services, nine-one-one dispatch, search and rescue, or even anytime you just want your garden. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next up is oh, Tim White or Dicky. And that person will be followed by Cassandra Summerfield. I've had a request from the back. They're saying they can't hear anything. Judd, do we have any more volume to give them?
Good evening everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tim B. I'm a business agent for the operating engineers of over eleven thousand retirees and active members of the state of Wisconsin. We are here to support the QTS data center and annex the land to forest. And I'm here to support the four thousand, five thousand jobs that's going to create the twelve billion dollar investment. And the fifty million dollar flex is to support local initiatives. Yeah, and I think that temporary jobs are hard. I spent my whole career, near thirty years of working construction in Dane County. So when everybody speaks about temporary jobs, it's, I kind of think it's a little hard because you know, it's, it's career, it's that temporary. So I'm just here to support the annexation of the land and forest. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Cassandra Summerfield, are you ready? And just one second. She will be followed by yeah, Susan Caseman. So be ready, Susan, wherever you are.
My name's Cassandra. I, the address is on the form there. I went into the forest high school. I, I grew up here and I love the area and I very much am concerned about the data center and coming into the area that they're looking at. A lot of people talk about water. Yes, water is very important. It's on prime aquifer and recharge areas that we have to be very sure of. So this is going to affect the Topen Creek and the Hard Watershed, including the lakes of Madison. And any of that damage does occur, it's going to fall back on the forest and the forest is going to have to handle those damages and it's going to be far greater than than it did in dollars. So one thing that a lot of people look at is the consumption, but what we need to actually focus on is the water withdrawal rate. Because when they pull our back into the system, it has different externalities in it and it's a different temperature, which affects things like the trout stream, which depends on the cold spring fed water. So water also isn't just in the cooling process. There's also power generation. And with the need for more power generation, there's going to be some sort of plant and power generation is responsible for over seventy percent of water withdrawals in Wisconsin. So clearly that's something that does consume a large amount of water. We also need to take into account what their onsite water usage is going to be and how much water is going to be withdrawn from all water sources. Cause they like to just focus on blue water sources. It's also important to note why they chose that land. If they don't care about the water, why did they choose prime aquifer and spring fed land? There are many forms of contaminants and externalities that we do need to be aware of that are going to enter the system, VOCs especially. There's an increased amount of that, basically anywhere data centers are present, you see that in the water table. And then we also need to be concerned about what happens with spills, any form of contamination. Nuclear power is emerging as the preferred energy solution since traditional power grids do struggle to keep pace. So are they planning on putting a large scale nuclear power there or maybe some small modular reactors like many like to go to? Otherwise, what type of energy sources are they planning to use? Are we, are we going to handle surges and outages? I mean, this is something that is going to directly affect the residents here. We also need to be concerned about the community. They say that they really care about the locals. Yet every location that I've looked into, there's been lawsuits of some sort with them. Lynn County is dealing with unpermitted wells. Fayetteville was dealing with safety issues where managers were sued. Or assuming because they were fired after raising concerns, there were actually worker deaths and serious injuries that did occur because of they were ignored. Prince William County, they violated numerous local laws, governing zoning procedures. And there actually was a recent judge that voided the rezoning and has halted the twenty one hundred acre project.
Really, thank you. I remind people when you come up here, I know you're nervous. But the faster you speak, the less we understand what you're saying. So take your time, take a breath. I'm old, my ears are old and I need to be able to hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Susan Caseman from Pleasant Springs Township just north of Stoughton. I'm asking you to seriously consider refusing to allow the proposed QPS, QTS data center to be built in the forest. The costs on many levels would be great and very few people would benefit. A data center is mainly a windowless warehouse that houses computer systems and related infrastructure. It is used to store, process, manage and share data for organizations. QTS refers to them as campuses, but they are very different from typical campuses. There is an excellent description of a data center in the November fifth, twenty twenty five issue of the New Yorker. There are three primary beneficiaries of data centers. First billionaire financiers use them to make high frequency transfers that allow them to make more money than their competitors in global markets. Because they have access to very slightly faster data processing and transmission speeds. Second, gamers use them for video games. Third, people who develop, utilize and market artificial intelligence. Part of the reason data centers are being built is the build first, build later mentality common in tech infrastructure cycles. However, the potential damage resulting from data centers is great. The destruction of land, water and air, upending of communities, the need to produce more electricity and the rising cost of electricity to consumers and challenges to people's health. The scale of data centers is hard to imagine. For example, a Fairweather data center near Kenosha, which is very close in size to the one that's being considered here spans three hundred and fifteen acres with one point two million square feet under roof. It is, it required forty-six miles of deep foundation piles and twenty-six million pounds of structural steels. And if a data center closes because contractors choose to have work done in China where it is less expensive or for some other reason, the local government will be left trying to rectify the situation and reclaim the land. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Spencer Stats and then Nancy O'Brien.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. Thank you for being a elected official. My name is, I'm sorry. My name is Spencer Stats. I'm a business representative from the local plumbers union. We represent approximately eighteen hundred people, women and men working in the construction industry. Just a few words about myself. I grew up in the area, just south of the forest on the other side of Windsor. Apparently now I live just northern town, bought my home about twenty years ago. Bought my home about twenty years ago. Been there ever since. Our kids live in the area and go to the forest school district. So this this project is probably the home for me. Forest is a, is a real opportunity here with with QTS. You are all well aware of the positive impact on the community, a financial impact on the community and surrounding communities. I'd like to address what this project means for working women and men in the construction industry. The workforce agreement that we have with QTS is a big deal. I can't stress that enough. This partnership helps strengthen the workforce pipeline into the, into the skilled trades for years to come. It's a real commitment to invest in great paying jobs with real benefits. I know this firsthand. I am a plumber. I went through an apprenticeship. At age twenty five, I was able to buy my house because of the wages and benefits I I earned in the construction industry. When I touch on the, on the temp jobs that some folks have. Commented on. Every, every construction project, it's our job to get that job done. Every job is a temporary job. We make a career out of. Projects, big and small, for thirty to thirty five years, I've worked for. I understand that this project is a big project, no doubt about it. We do live in Dane County. Dane County is the fastest growing county in the state. Capital city. UW campus. We are, we are sprawling community, sprawling county. You have an opportunity to partner with a company. Who isn't coming here asking for corporate handout. They're willing to pay for everything. I'm guessing that you see many proposals from companies coming to town. Then why don't you pay for infrastructure, utilities, that type of thing, tip districts. Not this time. This is a real opportunity for the community. I don't envy your position. You're going to make some folks happy, make some folks sad. Amen. So, but I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy O'Brien.
My name is Nancy O'Brien. My address is five zero nine Valley Drive. I have been a teacher in the DeForest School District for over thirty years. I am highly concerned by the proposal being placed before our village board. To build an AI data center in our community. I am saddened by both the secrecy and number of closed door sessions that have allowed this process to get as far as it has. There are deep pockets of money from out of state that have brought this proposal forward. This is evidenced by the huge barrage of QTS ads that bombard our citizens on a daily basis. Let's be clear, this QTS data center is not a job creator. These data centers do not employ people in a long term capacity. As a matter of fact, these data centers have a dismal reputation of employing the least amount of employees per square foot. Once data centers are up and running, they employ very few people. This QTS data center will have an extremely negative impact on our community's energy. Did you know that this one DeForest data center will employ more energy? Than is used by all of the homes in Dane County combined? Additionally, the cooling systems used by this data center will require vast amounts of water. And push our community members' utility bills to the brink. They will tell you that their data center uses a closed loop water circulation. Keep in mind to have this closed loop cooling system. Chemicals including PPHs, corrosion inhibitors and biocides will be employed. I would not want these ending up in our community's groundwater. Let's talk about the scale of this AI center. It will be gigantic, a behemoth. In fact, it will be as large as the epic canvas of Verona. Data centers are huge polluters. People who have the misfortune of living near data centers complain about the constant unremitting hum. That is emitted twenty four hours a day, a noise they are unable to escape. Without a doubt, our property values will go down and the impact on wildlife will be devastating. Do not be fooled by the QTS presenters tonight. QTS is owned by the notorious private equity firm Blackstone. Trust me, Blackstone does not have the best interests of our community in mind. I implore you, our elected village board members, to vote no to this out of state corporate grab. Thank you.
All right. We're going to take a few more. Let's hear from. One second for organization. Savannah, okay, Savannah Klein and then following her. Is. Aya, A Y C H. Had a pogo. Again, I apologize if I kill your names, but.
Hello, my name is Savannah Klein and I live at six oh nine Shaz Bark Lane here in DeForest. Today I'm asking the board to oppose moving forward with the decision to approve annexing land from Vienna to build QTS data center. This is, this is a decision that more people deserve to weigh in on with much, with as much information as possible. Even local legislation and state level legislation that people are looking tirelessly to move forward. So it would be a disservice to move forward. It'd be a hasty decision to move forward without letting more people have the chance to access their opinions and have more people have. More guardrails to this situation. We're asking you to wait, think beyond the initial paycheck that are, that is coming in. This is an irreversible decision. The trees cannot be unpugged. The animals that are impacted do not come back. The people that could be priced out of our community may not have the opportunity to return. Wait until there are more regulations, more guardrails in place. Or better yet, do not move forward with the project as is. Thank you.
And then we'll move to Jenny Sweet.
For the record, I have a quick worse pronunciation, so you're pretty good. My name is Special Dipolo. I'm a resident of the forest and my. My name is Icha Dipolo. I'm a resident of the forest and my address is on the sheet over there. Good evening, fellow DeForest residents and village board members. For the past few weeks, I have been utterly inundated by QTS ads. I received a flyer in the mail. I see constant ads for QTS data centers and how great they will be for Wisconsin on YouTube. I even get sponsored QTS ads in my email. My first instinct was, what is this company and why are they spending so much money to target and promote new ads? So I did some digging and now I have some questions. One free closed loop cooling system says the ad. So I went on QTS's website to find out more. I was required to give QTS my full name, where I'm employed, my job title and my work email just to request additional information. Regarding which QTS still has not emailed me an information or even responded back. Thousands of jobs for your community says QTS. But I must ask, how many of these jobs will remain once the construction of the data center is complete? What's the bar of entry of the remaining jobs? Will a graduate of the high school we are in right now qualify? Or will our children need to take out tens of thousands of dollars of students that just to get their foot in the door? While QTS tells them they do not have the necessary experience. Because AI residing in these data centers already took over entry level jobs in many sectors. What about the electricity? In my research, I've found that QTS's cooling system relies on dry cooling, essentially industrial fans blowing air twenty four seven. Shipping the burden on our resources from water to even more electricity usage. While their ambient cooling technology isn't effective during the summer. Does QTS mention any of this in their ads? Of course not. What about the sales and use tax breaks QTS will be getting from the state? Which includes tax breaks on their electricity usage. While us DeForest residents have to deal with an already increasing property tax and utility bills burden. Is that mentioned anywhere on these ads? Nope. And you know what? I have more questions. I just don't have the time for that. In these QTS ads, images of smiling faces of strangers populate the screen while written words make promises of this private equity owned corporation's support of our community. Or as I like to call it, more empty PR slogans. When combined with the lack of transparency and the lack of actual data to back up the PR slogans, the millions of dollars being dangled in front of us by QTS. Appears at best like an attempt to buy you with gold and at worst an outright bribery of our community. Make no mistake, long after the one time came and QTS proposes Ron Zell. The data center and its burden on our resources in town will remain. I strongly urge the boards to wish QTS for full transparency and meaningful disclosures in data made easily accessible to all the forest residents. And I further urge the board to allow the residents of the forest to vote on the issue. After all, we will be the ones most directly impacted by the presence of a data center spanning fourteen hundred acres of prime farmland in our town. Thank you.
All right. We have a few people on Zoom. I know there are other people, but we have been ignoring Zoom. So I'm going to call them. Are we ready for that? Okay, that's the John Burley. All right, Mr. Burley. Give us one second, Jamie. Sure. I like being able to see the fun. Okay. Mr. Burley, are you ready?
Yes, I am ready. My name is John Burley and my address is seven eight five six Wernicke Road in Windsor. I am voicing my opposition to the QTS data center attempting to build in our area. To any board member that hasn't seen beyond the buzzwords and the money they have been throwing around, focus on the details. QTS states they want to be a community partner. A partner that uses secrecy and avoiding the ugly answers to get the yes votes. Once the ink dries, it's too late. No amount of fines or complaints will fix the damage. It will be cheaper for QTS not to. They have an agreement in principle with Alliant Energy. Quote, "To enable renewable energy sources across Wisconsin." End quote. That is a hollow statement offering no legal commitments or guarantees. It's just them stating it's a good idea. QTS loves to point out their closed loop cooling system. But they won't answer how many gallons it takes to fill the system or what other chemicals may be in there. Or how, how often it's replaced. Or what happens with the flush coolant. Their presentation shows a picture of their landscaping that they call sound dampening. We need answers in decibels. QTS has come for sixteen hundred acres of your neighbor's land. Obscene amounts of electricity. We don't know how much water. Thermal pollution, noise pollution, light pollution. And unknown contamination including heavy metals and who knows what else. They were offering us all the risk and a flagrant disregard to our legitimate concerns. Do better, QTS. It's insulting. QTS and others need to move fast. People are beginning to understand the real costs. Communities are getting together to support each other and governments are starting to talk about legislating regulations and guardrails. We don't need to move fast. It's in our best interest not to. We don't need QTS and they know it. Village trustees, Vienna has already voted down their part in this. Meaning all of the blame and responsibility is squarely on your shoulders. If you vote yes, you will not be able to hide behind they promised something different. The members of your community, the vote for you to represent them are begging for at least a referendum. If you won't vote it down altogether. Take a breath, take a breath and focus on the details, the ones QTS leaves out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. It's seven eighteen. I'm just saying. We got a stack here and by eight o'clock. We have to move to our regular agenda. So we're not trying to cut anyone off, but you all have our email addresses. I know from the hundreds of emails I'm getting. You've got the ability to submit. What was that? This is not a conversive conversation. This is where we are. This is a business meeting, not a pep rally. We are able to take written comments. We're able to take lists of people supporting and opposed. And I know that that isn't always as satisfying. But if, if, you know, you want to take that route, we can do that. There are people who sat on their slips. They need to be out of here by a certain time. We would like to honor that, but I'm just telling you, we have other avenues to get your comments in. So we will, we will do as much as we can. All right, so. Is there anyone who spoke the last time? That has signed up to speak this time? Because I'd like to give those who haven't had a chance of an opportunity.
She was called next to speaking lady.
Yeah. Ma, I'm sorry. And I just, if you've already spoken, when your name is called. Give someone else another chance and then if we have time, we'll come back. Otherwise, you know, there will be public hearings and other opportunities.
Okay, Jenny, we have my address. I'm asking the village of the forest now to annex some petition land. QTS has big plans and they are very vague in their promises. Here are a few reasons why. Some of you know and many probably don't know that the cooperation agreement QTS presented to the town of Vienna. This agreement was originally twenty million dollars. With no initial response, QTS quickly increased that up to thirty nine million. They kindly promoted this agreement at their open house, a means of support Vienna for their loss of land petitioning to the annexation. What they didn't promote, our lines in the agreement required Vienna to cooperate with QTS to facilitate the use, development, construction. And our operation of the project, on the project area and potentially adjacent lands. The town also agrees to cooperate with public statements and press releases, unquote. It seems cooperation and a positive public perception was valued at thirty nine million dollars to QTS. That is a significant amount of silence. This contract was over the course of fifteen years. Maybe there is significance and maybe there is not to those fifteen years. But it also aligns well with the set estimates of the data center lifespan. Fifteen years would be sufficient time to experience some of the effects of an AI data center and we would have to deal with any issues. According to Bloomberg Insider, some of those include impacts of drinking water, water table levels, impacts of wetlands and wildlife that exists today. Time to hand it's additional land as they freely noted in the agreement. Further building of energy needed to operate the center, potentially as nuclear plants, windmills or other means. At a recent QTS open house, when Alliant Energy was asked how they're going to power the AI data center. They stated, quote, "They have some surplus of energy." I found this very interesting statement, where particularly. Area and Alliant Energy businesses during unusually higher temperatures this summer were asked to multiple times to transfer to the backup generators to power their operations. If they truly had surplus, why ask leave operations to disconnect? What will happen when forest and area residents see significant powers demanded by this AI data center? QTS recently stated they would preserve forty acres of wetland habitat to support wildlife and community recreation. They use the word will preserve. They did not state they will place forty acres in to preserve. Oddly enough, there's already forty acres nearby by the US Fish and Wildlife. Is that what they're preserving? QTS has not lied in their statements, but they not, have not been fully forthcoming. Is this what we call transparency? We, when we listen to QTS, this is an upper scale sentence. I'm asking the village of this forest to not exit this land and to exercise this with great caution. And remember, it's not what they say, it's really what they don't say.
Can you state your name again? Some of the board members didn't hear.
It's Jenny and you have my address. It's Jenny and you have my address.
Jenny.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, next up, we have Daniel Jansen. And then we will take Nancy Roth.
I am, uh, Daniel Jansen, eight one eight Woodsland, Florida, the Forest responsibly. I've been a resident of the Forest for twenty years now. And uh, to keep it short, uh, I think a lot of things have been said, but I'd like to register my opposition to the annexation. I'd like to register my opposition to the annexation and the uh, agreement with the uh, QTS corporation. Um, my wife is also here, same address, Lydia Reed. And um, she also would like to register her opposition and she's been with us at the time since you're over.
Thank you, Daniel. Nancy Roth.
Hello, my name is Nancy Roth. I live at seventy six twenty five Bonetti Road. I will be able to, from my role, see the data center. After attending the first QTS open house and asking questions of them for over an hour, almost an hour and a half, reading QTS mailings and looking at QTS materials on the internet, I have noticed that they make many unsubstantiated claims and lofty promises. As the board considers even thinking about allowing this multi-billion dollar corporation into our community, you must demand from QTS precise answers backed by facts, data, and examples from existing QTS facilities. Due diligence is of the utmost importance. It is the responsibility of QTS to prove that all statements they make and all promises they offer are true, verifiable, and will be put into contractual language. It is not your job to prove they are being untruthful. It is their job to prove all of their claims to your satisfaction. If their facility is such a positive for the Forest and your township neighbors, QTS must support all claims they make to your satisfaction and the satisfaction of the communities affected. With the help of my neighbors in Vienna, the Forest and Windsor, I have compiled a list of over one hundred questions that QTS must answer. Categories of concern include water and energy, loss of valuable farmland, environmental issues, rapid obsolescence of both computers and buildings, lack of transparency, and the inflated job numbers they're giving us, just to name a few. In the next couple of days, I will email each of you a copy of my questions. I know you have many questions of your own, but we cannot leave any avenue unexplored before a decision of this magnitude is made. Please consider asking QTS all of the questions we send you. I would like this list to be added to the public record. Well, well, you invite this multi-billion dollar corporation whose only real purpose is to make more billions into our small peaceful community. QTS and whoever rents from them or the AI will basically control the Forest for the years to come. Truly, we will become the mouthpieces of QTS. As Jenny said, we had the experience in Vienna where they wanted Vienna to only make public statements in support of QTS. Please say no to the proposed data site center as soon as you can. Tell them our community is not for sale. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna move through Gary, have you left? Eric Garcia. I don't see him.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak uh, at this event.
You're very happy here. You're gonna sit close and tell us your name.
Hi, Lily, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Gary Garcia. I am a neighbor of uh, the Forest since three years already. So I would like first acknowledge the fact that indeed this project has enormous potential to make jobs and to uh, support the economic development of the Forest. However, I still would oppose this because I would like to bring also here a perspective of health. So you know, a data center is meant to work continuously twenty four seven. So imagine now the level of noise that these facilities will produce. Imagine today as you go back home and then you uh, enjoy the peaceful environment of our community to hear a sound of five fifty to seventy decibels. So this is a constant heavy traffic that you are going to feel all the time. Science is pretty clear. Study after study has shown that exposure to such levels of noise causes enormous deleterious effect on the health. So you can imagine that you're asleep, it's going to be disturbed. And this is a type of sound that will not disturb. There is no New Years, there is no Christmas break that will run constantly. It is because of these events that have been experienced by many people around the world. And there are numerous complaints and it's, I think it's important also to review the literature and then to see that people that live in the vicinity of data centers show elevated levels of stress, elevated compression. While it is important to acknowledge the importance of the economic potential of this project, we have also to think about our health. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Um, again, if you've already testified or appeared one other time, give someone else a chance. Stephanie Manley. And then after her will be Jenny Sweft. We. She. That was a wonderful one. Oh, she did already. Thank you. See, it took the whole little, I agree with you.
Right, uh, it's Matt Tandy after her. Uh, I'm Stephanie Manley. I'm six eight nine three, Madigan Road, Monachee, which is the town of Vienna. And thank you for seeing us all tonight. Um, as a town of Vienna resident, I'm here tonight in for you, the board and the residents of the Forest. If this does go to referendum, to vote no, not annexing town of Vienna land. It can be painted in any way with annexation, but it's still the heart of the town of Vienna. Vienna's roots run deep with agriculture and homesteads that have been castor generations. That's what makes your community special. The generations before us not taking the shiny apple from the serpent to preserve our land are peace paradise for our next generations. I see the little faces that are the third and fourth generations living here and they can't wait to part these lands. This is our way of life. We are not some open land west to the forest. We are thriving businesses, families and neighbors. We understand the impacts of reducing our climate, our land and natural areas on our health, our pockets, our businesses and our futures. We are not just to second our ways to make changes. We are not uneducated about the situation. We have taken time to go to meetings, QTS presentations and done our due diligence to learn as much as we can. We came together and asked our town board not to sign a cooperation agreement with QTS. We don't want it. The fact is, there's not enough facts to make this huge gamble worth it. We understand the amount of money being offered and we believe that great money comes pretty worse. I ask you tonight to listen to your residents and stand with your neighbors who already said no. I'm asking now to annex the land, the town of Vienna for this QTS project.
Thank you. All right, Matt Tandy.
Hey, good evening. Uh, my first time for a meeting in Tandy. Um, just wanted to come and see, uh, I'm Matt Tandy. I have been Village of the Forest resident for about the last ten years. You guys have my address on the form. I'm here to register my disapproval, not encourage you to vote against it. That's just our principle, but um, just saying that this is the second time in the year, I'm pretty disappointed with the board. Uh, the whole project is pretty shitty. Uh, there's a reason they're trying to rush things and I fully support any kind of proposals. So I would encourage projects of this size that are not in like the tenure projected development plans to be uh, put into referendum. This is not part of the plan. If uh, people try to put down the frisbee goal, of course, without being in the park's tenure plan, this should be in the plan either. Um, if it's an emergency situation where it needs to be addressed as to, you know, just economic things might be uh, interest rates or other details that are financially emergent, uh, it should, it will be put together into a referendum project for the rest of the community to take note of. Thanks.
All right. Is Amy Martin here?
Uh, Jane, she had to leave and she's gonna send energy down to Ford.
All right. Good. Sarah Rippe and then Nancy O'Brien. We have, okay. Your quote, I'm on the chat. Zoe Sullivan after Sarah Rippe.
I'm here, I'm here. Okay, I'm sorry, Sarah, I'm hiding. I'm here.
Sarah Rippe, my address is on the board in front of you, but I'm a town of Vienna resident. I've been up here.
Slow down, just say your name more clearly.
Sarah Rippe, I'm a Vienna resident. My address is on the form. I've already been up here and that's why I was rushing, but I just want to urge you guys again to please consider thinking of the township next to you and not annex the land from Vienna. Uh, Vienna made their stance very clear when we turned down the cooperation agreement for nearly forty million dollars. And then trying to get, they're trying to give us QTS status. If our small town of Vienna can look past forty million dollars, surely the town of DeForest, Village of the Forest can do that, considering they have much more land and property tax revenue than we do. Vienna has the strictest housing laws in Dane County for a reason to keep productive farmland producing. Please, please, please be a good neighbor. Do not take the land from Vienna, do not annex it and please do the right thing. If you do, please know that you are likely setting forward a domino effect and Vienna will become the next town of Burg. Do you guys know where that is anymore? Because it really doesn't exist. Please do the right thing and don't annex the land.
All right. Sam Mel.
So, Talbot?
Oh, you were next. So Sam Mel, are you ready?
Hi, uh, my name is Zoe Sullivan. I live in Madison. Um, I am a former journalist and I produced a podcast about the data center that was proposed a couple of years ago in Mount Pleasant. Um, I'm here because I believe that there is a significant risk of a financial bubble surrounding data centers and AI. And if that bubble bursts, it could have serious consequences for the local finances of the community. Um, this is an issue that is being reported on in basically every major news outlet. And I think it's really important to consider because as has already been noted, the infrastructure in data centers becomes obsolete very quickly. So if there is a bubble and it bursts, you can't go back to it in ten years. Thank you.
Uh, Sam Mel, good morning, Professor Owen Monachee. Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Sam Mel and I'm a twenty year old, like, long resident of Vienna, a dairy farm and a twenty twenty four DeForest graduate. I'm here again, once, I'm here once again to urge you to not allow QTS to place a data center in my land I've always called home. As I stated before, I've spent many years representing the Forest at the state and national level in countless ways, especially from my passion for agriculture. And that's why I was to see the town even considered removing their very thing that I've dedicated myself to protecting, to growing. But to say, let's be honest, why are we even having this debate? Money, don't get me wrong, I like money just as much as the next person, but at some point, we have to ask ourselves, are we making decisions for the planning reasons? Or are we letting dollar signs drown out our values? Every single person I've talked to in the community is against this, except the people who game financially. That alone says a lot. Vienna refused the annexation bribe because they knew it wasn't right. If the Forest comes in and takes this land away, it feels no different than taking something from a smaller community simply because it can. It's stealing. They don't want the deal, they don't benefit, benefit from it, and deep down, we all know that that is wrong. And to the landowners who live in itself, I get it. Farming is not easy, but look around. There are plenty of farmers who would love the opportunity to buy and work that land. And if not them, then the younger generation, kids in this very community and in this room, including myself, who dream of farming, but can't get it worth the skyrocketing price of land. No, you can't compete with the corporations in Cheggville, but ask yourself, is that extra money really worth tearing the future right out of your next generation's pants? You had opportunities growing up, why take ours? And we all complain that kids don't know how to work anymore. Well, if you approve this deal, you're helping create that problem by taking away the very, taking away the very word that teaches responsibility, grit and pride. I know I can't, I know I couldn't hold my head high after that. I don't think anybody else could either. So I am begging, as someone who loves this town, as someone who wants a future in agriculture, and as someone who wants to give back to this community, please do not take this deal. Give people like me a chance to continue doing what we love. Give Vienna the respect it deserves and give our agricultural future a fighting chance. My generation is the one being affected. I know many of the board members up here have kids that are my age. I know a few of them very personally. Think about them. Don't think about yourselves, think about others. It is our generation that will be affected. Please not take this deal. Thank you for listening for the future of your town.
All right. Eugene.
Eric, I've spoken before, but I read.
Well, we'll reg through you as opposed again, but if, if you have spoken before, you'll give someone else a chance. Thank you. I appreciate your patience and understanding. Jonathan Broms.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jonathan Brok. One twenty five East Holm Street. I've been a resident in the Forest for seven years, a resident of the Forest Windsor area for twelve years. I'm here tonight to express that I do not support the annexation of land and construction of the data center in the Forest. Concerns about increased utility costs, water consumption, this facility will have on our community. According to the International Energy Agency, a typical AI data center uses as much electricity as a hundred thousand households and consumes billions of gallons of water. Once that water is pumped out of our water table, we cannot put it back. But there's a concern about losing jobs without this project. I encourage the village to focus its efforts in building more homes and apartments to lower harvesting costs or make more investments in repairing and upgrading roads, utilities and other infrastructure and looking for other ways to encourage amenities and businesses that improve the quality of life in our community without compromising our natural resources. Again, I ask the board not to support the annexation of land and the construction of the data center in the Forest.
Okay, good group. Cynthia Gass there? Okay, we'll move on. Um. Jerry Flaw.
Susha.
Hello, my name is Jerry Schraub. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm from sixty-six twenty-one Ramshorn, DeForest, I'm resident of Windsor for thirty-three years. I'm opposed to the proposed Dane's data center for many reasons. I grew up and worked on our small Wisconsin dairy farm. This experience has given me a lifelong appreciation for our essential connection to the natural world. When my father was still alive and he would come and visit, we would drive around the Windsor Forest Dairy and he would admire farmland here and envy it. This is the best farmland in the state, he would say. I would like to see Wisconsin remain America's dairyland, not turn into America's data center. From virtual meetings to email shopping, social media, digital technology has already invaded every corner of our brains and daily activities. Modern life is extremely stressful. Evermore, technology will not help that. So my first question is, do we really need this? Currently, the state of Wisconsin has at least seven massive data centers in various stages. The closest is Beaver Dam, just thirty-five minutes away. That project has already broken ground and is approximately five hundred acres. I'd invite the village board members to travel up Highway one fifty-one and view that site. It was shockingly large as we drove past it several weeks ago. The proposed QTS project here is three times that size. I expect the presentation we will see from QTS will be glowing with no risks and endless benefits for DeForest in greater Dane County. But to be clear, we have what they want, not the other way around. This decision is a huge responsibility for a small village to undertake. Projecting forwards, what happens if things do not go as planned? Say the AI bubble, tech bubble pops, QTS changes its purpose, closes or sells to some other entity. Is the village of DeForest prepared to take on problems that might arise against a multi-billion dollar corporation? Water depletion and noise and light pollution, energy cost increases, PFAS, road infrastructure, fire risks, the financial consequences are complex and great. Failures would not affect just DeForest, but the entire region for generations to come. Sometimes with measuring wealth, it is best to recognize the great riches one already has. Here, we, we here in greater DeForest area are incredibly blessed with an enviable balance of urban opportunity and proximity to parks, trails, and wetlands that nourish and sustain life of all kinds. Why would we want to risk those irreplaceable assets we already have? I respectfully ask the village of DeForest to be a good neighbor and please say no. We will be just fine without this. Thank you.
Kelly Curtis. And then Bowlin Kelly. We won't have time for a couple more. Larry Caseman, you're up next.
Hi, my name is Kelly Curtis. I live at four two two Metalo Drive here, Metalo Trail, sorry, in DeForest here. I bought my first house here at the age of forty and I made a very conscious decision to become part of this community. And when people buy houses, a lot of times you're going to realize that your neighbors make up a lot of the value of where you purchase your homes, a big investment. It was a huge investment as a single individual. I enjoyed my neighbors in Vienna, Wannakee, Lodi, Daneburg, and all the places that I've enjoyed coming to know in this community. This represents an area that I grew up in Michigan on an eight-hundred acre farm. I see this as a home and a place that I've gotten to know the people and invested into. It saddens me to think, as I'm opposed to the data center and the annexation of this property into DeForest, that many of us will seriously consider moving out of this community that no longer represents us, that no longer looks like the community that we entered and the investment that we've made into it. I myself, being that this is my first home, I absolutely love it, I love my neighbors. That I'll be losing my home because the community will no longer be what I came to invest into. So I really want the board to strongly encourage an opposition to the data center. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Caseman. I live in Pleasant Springs, just north of Stone. I was born, raised in Windsor and went to DeForest High School many years ago. I'm here to ask you to vote against annexing Vienna Township land to allow a proposed QTS data center to be built in DeForest. QTS is wholly owned by Blackstone and, which is a private equity firm. And Blackstone owns seventy billion dollars worth of data centers and from ten different data center companies. And it can pull the plug or decide to do it at one specific point and that's where it's going. You may be the default beneficiaries of that. I did a perplexity AI search to get a summary of lawsuits and complaints raised against QTS. It's a part of the handout, which I've also emailed to you so you could go to live links and find those many, many lawsuits that have been filed against them and ongoing and interrupting their, their projects. I won't detail them here, but I would just mention that the lawsuit underscores systemic safety management allegations connected to the company's projects. This is a summary sentence from the perplexity, which is an AI thing. I mean, it's not my reporting, it's theirs. The QTS data center in Manassas in April of this year experienced, the data center there experienced a major gas leak that took eight hours of rescue people and fire departments to quell. QTS would not answer questions about what the gas was or why it leaked. Gives you some indication about the trustworthiness and future relations of this company. QTS has lacked transparency in its plans and operations, has been brought to court many, in many of the recent projects. It markets its data centers as campuses, which is a joke, and claims to be community-based while leaving a trail of pain and difficulty for many of the projects it has engaged in recently. Therefore, I would encourage the board to not vote to help this company continue its behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seven fifty-one, Kim Hahn.
Hi, I'm Kim Hahn. Live at seven six one one Patroom Daily. Yes, I will leave across the road, one will leave down from the road. They're all over. It's, it's gonna be nice when QTS comes up here and they hand out money and also tell them how much money they've given to UW and how much money they're planning on bringing into the community. That's bribery. It's not donating anything. The homeowners that live around there outnumber the farmers. We, our, our property is worth nothing, absolutely nothing now. I couldn't, we have a lot for sale and we, we saved it for our kids. Our kids don't even want to live out there now, just the thought of this. We have one thousand four hundred and two people around looking at the lot. The first lot, the first question and only question we get is, where is the data center? We get to point across the board. And they hide them out now. When the data centers are going to be built and these farmers are getting massive amounts of money, what happens to the rest of us that don't have a choice to leave? We have absolutely no choice. We can't give away our, our land, our homes. So what happens to the rest of us? This is our life too. And I'd like to bring up one other thing is we are a union household too. We've gone to the union since nineteen eighty-three and we expect these people to realize too that they're hurting their brothers and sisters. Thank you.
All right. Jay Walsh.
At this point in the night, I think, look, I just won the lottery. Anyway, Jay Walsh from four oh four Philteris Court in DeForest, Wisconsin. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to me. Most everything that I had written down on here has already been said. But just a couple of the things that are on here does frustrate me a little bit that that QTS is tied after us because they're sending, they're going, oh, so there's all this, they're remapping this super everything. That's, that's there right now. That's where you guys sat on your board meetings. I, I'm a bit of a, I'm a bit of a realist, you know, everybody, I I would view and write environmental documents for a state agency. I've written, reviewed over two hundred documents, sorry, Brandon. And the one thing that I heard tonight from one person was the most important part of an environmental document that the person mentioned need. There's a, there's a data center in Beaver Dam. I think she said, how many data centers are really needed to handle the mountains over here and the amount of, the amount of volume data that has to be handled in Wisconsin? So I think, you know, needed, needed is a very good point. A lot of people came up with some very interesting points. Some of the points didn't have any backing to it. They just made assumptions and assertions. That's what I see all over this too from QTS. There's no data that backs it up. I'm sure they may have it, but they certainly haven't shared it with anybody. But I also heard from a lot of people tonight, they did some very good research on this and they came up with some data to back the things that they said. So I would ask if you guys do the same research as people have done, but find out what QTS really is before you go on this. As I said, I'm also a bit of a realist. I have not, I have been sold bill of goods many, many times over the years by DeForest Village Board about the great things that these projects were going to bring, how my property taxes were going to go down. My property taxes in the times that I've lived in, DeForest's gone down once. So again, a realist, boy, I'd like to see you guys vote this down, but I don't believe it's going to happen for one second because it's pretty money we have. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. I have one here that isn't registered and supports or opposition. Dale Meister, Myster.
Good evening. I'm Dale Meister. I live at six oh nine East Toll Street. I did not mark either for or against because I wanted more information. However, the reason I would like to speak to you this evening is, it seems, at least public perception over the last several years, any meter development that came into the village was helped by my tax dollars. We have a lot of TIP districts, we had some direct incentives. I want to urge the board that if this project is going to go ahead, it needs to be judged on its own merits. And it certainly cannot have any public subsidy to it. And so I urge the board to do your due diligence for the value of this project, but absolutely no public tax dollars to be put forward for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some people here who have spoken before. Ed Morganrod. It's seven fifty-eight AM, so, all right, you're in.
Wow. All right. Thank you. My name is Ed Morganrod. I'm in four oh seven one Great Big Drive in the Village of DeForest. Let me start out with my position on the, on the data center proposal and then I'll, I'll give you my reasons. Like many, many others today, I am asking you to vote no on QTS's annexation request when it is received and no on any related zoning changes if, when they are brought forward. Nowwithstanding some positive community benefits promised, a data center more than two square miles with all the intended six-plus years-long construction schedules, huge environmental risks and huge financial risks is not right for DeForest. The sheer size of the planned data center development with all its negatives and risks can't be overstated. Sixteen hundred acres is more than twenty-five times bigger than the entire new QuickTrip campus, which is approximately sixty acres built along highways fifty-one and nineteen. And the QuickTrip campus looks large. QuickTrip campus was approximately a hundred and twenty million dollar development. QTS's own literature states that there will be a twelve billion dollar capital investment. That is one hundred times as big an investment as the QuickTrip campus. Even at the first phase of six hundred and fifty acres, it's only four billion, it's still over thirty times as big. So much for trying to maintain DeForest's small-town feel. Given the size and scale of QTS comes the loss of control of money, right? And huge financial risk down the road for DeForest to have such a huge percentage of tax revenues coming from a single development and a single property owner, taxpayer. This is only heightened by the risk of obsolescence in fifteen-plus years. Some loss of that revenue due to likely obsolescence and lower commercial property valuation would be catastrophic. Tax rates would have to explode on current taxpayers in order to make up for the gap. And this is, this is important, data centers do not track commercial or residential development. Data centers generally have a lifespan of fifteen to twenty-five years. And with the pace of technological change, it could well be shorter. Repurposing the buildings and campus would be very difficult. Data center buildings have much lower ceilings and are configured differently than distribution centers that DeForest has a number of now. We all know what our parents told us, when something is too good to be true, it's too good to be true and beware. In closing, no data center, vote no. Thank you.
All right, we have two people left that have spoken before. Tricia, do you want to speak again? Okay, we haven't spoken before, Kana. And then the last one that's here is Rhonda, so. And, and I know she's spoken before, so she can, should, Rhonda.
Hi, my name is Tricia Volkey. I live in DeForest and the address that I wrote on the form. I am opposed to the proposed data center and to the annexation of the land for several reasons that I don't have time to address in three minutes. First, Vienna agreed unanimously that no amount of money was enough compensation to destroy sixteen hundred acres of pristine farmland and natural habitats. That says something. Second, I have a board of all of the animals that live there and I don't know what's going to happen to them. I'd like you to think about that. I am a former teacher with a master's degree in special education, a certified peer support specialist, and a job developer for adults with special needs. I know that the village has an obligation to protect the mental health of everyone and children and adults with special needs and sensory issues. Megan Harrier at five oh two Riverside Drive also stands opposed to the data center and has sent you the accommodations and studies that are required according to ADA section five oh four and NWEPA. the accommodations and studies that are required according to ADA section five oh four and NWEPA. It concerns me that I've heard from people at ATC that you have been in talks since December of twenty twenty-four regarding this project, which is also confirmed by employees at QTS long before anyone in our community was made aware of this. This is extremely distressing. And in less than six days, as of the time of this meeting, about one thousand forty DeForest residents have already signed a petition right here to bring any projects larger than about thirty acres or costing the taxpayers ten million dollars to a referendum. We only needed to collect eight hundred thirty-three, eight hundred thirty-six signatures and had sixty days to do it. I think this speaks volumes. You need to know that over the past week, myself and about twenty DeForest volunteers who have collected signatures have spoken directly to all of these people in the community. The biggest issue was that you did not listen to them mostly because of the pin seekers thing, who eventually they went bankrupt. We heard it again with Bucky's. We heard it again with fluoride, and we heard it again with the disco proposal. The community feels time and time again that they have not been heard by you. Lastly, I chose to move my family from Wanakee to Windsor in twenty fourteen after reading the DeForest comprehensive plan. I love that it was close to Tobe Creek Conservancy, Tobe Creek County Park, walking, biking trails, and several other parks in the Ahara River. What the board has been improving and bringing into DeForest no longer reflects why we moved. Here, even through the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan, it still shows all of this land is zoned agricultural. The only positive thing that has come out of this entire thing is that our community is uniting at a time when issues are dividing us. Our community is becoming empowered to have a say in what happens here. People are connecting in ways they have not for a long time. It is the most beautiful thing I've ever seen. You can choose to support what thousands of people in your community want, or you can continue to fight the very people who elect you to do your job. You heard loud and clear that this community was done, being ignored when you chose to take fluoride out of the water, without letting the communities decide.
Thank you. Thank you. Just reading that story doesn't make us understand you better, so please. All right, guys, we have one more, two more. And if we do that, that's it, because then we've got to move on. We have other business. And we've heard from you three times.
And I'm here again. My name is Rhonda Meindhals. I'm a lifelong resident of the forest. I grew up in what is now the village of Windsor and have spent the majority of my adult life in the, living in the town of Vienna. Not only have I grown up here, but I've also raised my girls here, and many of my extended family members live here and embrace their families very well. The forest is a fabulous town with lots to offer, which is why so many of us that were raised here have chosen to stay here. Over the past several weeks, I have spent much of my time actively speaking to residents in the town of Vienna as well as the village of DeForest about the proposed data center. And one thing that seems to be a very common theme is that the vast majority of those who live here are clearly opposed to this project. We can all understand that communities have the need to grow in order to maintain lower taxes for everyone, but at what cost to those of us who live here? QTS has thrown around all sorts of promises, giving millions of dollars to various different organizations. And while that may seem generous to some, it is simply not worth the risks that come along with such a project. I was going to talk here today about what happened in the town of Vienna last week, but my people that spoke before me made it very clear what happened. Our board members there unanimously voted down a forty million dollar cooperation agreement. I am so proud to live in a township or a municipality that listens to their residents. The village of DeForest Board needs to follow suit. Be kind to your neighbors in Vienna, whose residents will be impacted by this the most, and do the right thing by walking away from this project. At this point, the entire situation is starting to feel like a hostile takeover, and we are not dealing with true community focused partners. The residents in both municipalities, as well as those that surround us, have spoken loud and clear. We do not want this here or anywhere near here for that matter. And yet, QTS continues to bulldoze forward with this project, completely ignoring those of us who live here. How is that a company that cares about the communities that they are a part of? At what point will the voices of the residents of the village of DeForest be heard? Aside from those of us who are gaining a financial benefit, no one wants this here. I am asking you as board members to listen to the people who you represent by denying the annexation request, therefore stopping this project from continuing any further. Thank you so much for your time.
Should I take the last one? We're way over time. There's one more. Now, Larry says we should take the last person, Mark Storch. You're up. Are you here, Flora?
Horn Storch, six sixteen Jerson Street. Hi, good to see you. Today I was talking with my daughter, and she raised a point that I want to make with all of you. When we came to DeForest twenty-eight years ago, it was a small town. It still feels like a small town. It's filled with people that care about each other, that take care of each other. And that's the kind of community that we enjoy, that we love, and we want to see continue. When a big player comes in, a company so large, QTS owned by Blackstone, that is just tremendous in size and power, that dynamic changes. It doesn't change in a good way. Yes, they will promise us that they will do things for the community. They actually will do things for the community. But there will come a day, and that day will occur, where they have to make a choice between are they going to support the residents of the forest or support their company? Don't be fooled. They have to support their company. They are owned and they are owned and held accountable by their shareholders. And they have to operate in that manner. So when that moment comes, we take a backseat. That day is one we will not look back fondly on. And I ask you to consider not the near term things that we might gain, but longer term things we might lose. Thank you.
All right, we're going to give everyone who had registered. With that, we are going to take a three minutes to in between, and then we will have our QTS presentation. Um, with seven point one, which is the concept plan presentation by QTS, Alex Alon is going to introduce it and first talk a little bit about process.
Yeah, so as noted on the agenda tonight, we're going to be receiving a concept presentation from QTS data centers for the proposed data center campus west of the interstate and on the highway. We just want to be clear for clarity, and there's no action being taken tonight on this. This is simply a conceptual presentation. Um, Friday last week, we did receive notice that an administration petition had been filed with the Wisconsin Department of Administration. The memo that's included in more packets gives a little bit more context. Um, I wrote that prior to us receiving that notice, so there's the verbiage in that memo reflects that. We also did receive an application for a con, excuse me, comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning associated with the proposal as well on Friday. Uh, before we hear from the development team tonight, I just want to take a couple of minutes to talk about process. Typically, when we receive those kinds of applications, uh, they're submitted forty-five days ahead of the planning and zoning meeting, in which they're going to be reviewed. As we've heard tonight, uh, due to the nature of this proposal and the pending annexation review, we're designing a process that holds off on any initial review of that until late January, early February instead. So as staff, we want to make sure that we're giving you all as the decision making uh, folks, the time for sessions like this to get public input, um, to gather additional detailed information on the technical side of things, of the proposal itself, um, before you're put into a place where you have to make any decisions on the project. So the team at QTS has been very respectful of that approach. They've already independently taken the opportunity to do some public engagement sessions within the community, uh, particularly, I think, over the last couple of weeks as well. Our staff has created a dedicated webpage for the project. Um, that's on engagedforest.com. On that page, we have information on scheduled meetings, um, the various steps in the entitled process, and we'll be updating that as we go forward with this. People can also sign up on engagedforest.com for notifications so that when there are updates, they can stay informed. Also take a minute, since we've got a full house here tonight, to plug that page. Uh, we have a development tracker on engagedforest.com. So even outside of this proposal, that page tracks projects from when they're initially, when we initially received an application for review um, on to project completion. Again, you can sign up for notifications. It's a great resource to stay up to date on what's going on from a community development standpoint. Additionally, for your information will also be, you'll likely be seeing some new faces joining staff throughout this proposal at future review meetings. We're going to be, in the interest of getting the, uh, most information that we can, and listening to help the technical experts, subject matter experience to review details of the developments, um, that we just don't have the in-house experience to review. We're also, as we've noted, have a lot of other projects going on in the community at any given time. Bringing on additional resources from a staffing and review perspective allows me to keep my staff focused on the stuff that is still ongoing in process right now and maybe coming down the pipeline as well. So we want to make sure that we're keeping our, uh, level of service with that regard. Um, before I introduce the, uh, project team here, are there any questions on process?
No, but just one thing I think we need to clear up. The village board did not know about this project. We've had no meetings on this project. We've made no decisions on this project. And I'm getting emails every day about these transparent, behind the scene meetings. It has not happened. I'm sorry that someone thinks it did, but it did not happen. And you can ask any one of these board members, they will tell you, they just learned about this project in the last couple of weeks. So we're just taking it in and doing our research, just like it does.
Questions on process? If not, I will invite Tag Griesen, who's the co-CEO of QTS, to introduce his team and get a, give an overview of the proposal.
Yeah. Okay, good. Yes, come on. Madam President, my name is Tag Griesen, Board of Trustees. Uh, you don't need my address to.
No, you're not.
Thank you so much for taking the time to spend with us this evening. I'm going to let each of my team members give a brief introduction, then I'll start the presentation. We understand we don't have a time limit, but out of perspective, we're going to keep our comments to fifteen minutes. We would offer any amount of time that you have for questions, and we will be at your, your pleasure for the rest of the night as needed, knowing you have more business to do.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to present our concept plan. My name is Ryan Hunter, and I'm the chief operating officer of QTS.
Good evening. My name is Neil Mayer. This is Kimberly Warren. We are the consulting engineer on project.
Good evening. Dan Miller with Oregon Consulting Architects on project.
As I mentioned earlier, uh, I'm the CEO of this company. But more importantly, you should know who I am as a person, just for the record. I grew up in a military family. I was the youngest of four. I graduated from the United States Military Academy at West Point, where things like duty and honor and country matter to me. I served in the active duty military and in the Virginia National Guard. I served the country for ten years. When I left active duty and the reserves, I went into elective office and sat on that side of the dais in Virginia for eight years, serving my community in ways that you guys are serving right now. And I appreciate your service, whether you vote for this project or not. QTS has two mottos. Powered by people, and we love each other, serve our communities, and commend the world. We live by those values, and we live by the value of servant leadership. In my mind, there are two kinds of CEOs in the world. The kind that builds a team, and that team is designed to serve him and do what he wants. There are also leaders and CEOs in the world that are designed to serve everybody else. They eat last. They're in line last. They serve people first. They wake up and say, how can I do what my team needs to be successful? And when I say my team, I mean communities that we go into. We have seventy-five data centers around the country. Every mayor that we serve will say the same thing. QTS does what they say they're going to do. As we think about my prepared remarks today, I encourage you to go through the process you're going through. We are not in a hurry. We are not trying to rush this. We will go at the pace that this Board of Trustees wants us to go at, full stop. We will answer the one hundred questions that are submitted to you in writing by one of the earlier speakers. If they're forwarded to me and my team, we will provide written answers to every single one of those questions. I was asked earlier by the media, what's with the transparency? Why aren't you guys giving information? We will give all the information, and I will see to it personally that you guys have the information you need to make this decision. If I was on that side of the dais, if this was my community, I would want to know everything about this project. And we're going to take the opportunity to do that. Tonight is the beginning of a conversation. It is the beginning of a project and a due diligence process that you guys will follow. And we're all in to do whatever you need to make the right decision. And if you decide to move forward with QTS, we'll be the best partner we possibly can. The project will not be perfect. There will be things in the project that go wrong. And we judge a relationship by partners who see things that go wrong and come together to solve them. Not back away and point fingers at each other and say, not my fault. It was the power company, not my fault. It was the contractor, not my fault. It was the Board of Trustees. We're in this together if we do it, and we're all in. So make the decision you're going to make in the next several months, but please rely on us as a resource to answer the questions that your community should get answers to. We're not going to hide from it. As you go through that process and go to a full public participation, we have two ears and one mouth. We are here to listen to what the community wants from us. I've heard words like bribe and stealing and those kind of things. And it's just hard for me to know when we come to a community and say, hey, can we help? Can we be a part of this? Can we be part of your solution? That is something that we take very seriously. The people that work on this project will be from the region. I heard, well, lacrosse isn't here. Well, I will tell you, we will take all comers for these seven hundred full-time jobs that are created in this data center project. Five thousand construction jobs. We heard they're temporary, they're not temporary. We believe they're not temporary. But seven hundred full-time jobs is not no jobs, and we will bring those jobs. Number two, in addition to the QTS seven hundred jobs, we will have tenants inside our data centers that will also be employed. Our job is to try to hire those people locally. There isn't some magical army of QTSers that comes from another state and works on these projects. They come from the communities that we become a part of, and they become part of the projects. I heard a lot about an AI bubble. This is not an AI data center. This is a data center. I've been in the business for twenty-five years. And twenty-five years ago, AI didn't exist. We had things like cloud services. We had things like Office and Excel and Palo Alto. Then we had things like the dot com boom. Then we had things like Bitcoin. Stay away from Bitcoin, just FYI. If you go through this long enough, you will see use cases come and go. Today's AI, tomorrow, quantum computing. The next day, not sure. The data center does two things. It consumes energy, which we'll talk about, and it dissipates heat, which we'll talk about. What's inside the data center is forever changing, and that longevity of the infrastructure we will build suggests it will be here for a lot longer than fifteen years. As we think about going forward, we're going to talk tonight about responsible building, about water usage, about noise, about the things that your community should and is going to get answers on. Ultimately, we will be part of this community. If we are successful in this project, we will be part of the community, and we take that very seriously. We've talked a lot about twelve billion dollars of investment. Just so I can say out loud. Just so I can say out loud how ridiculously large that number is, I'm gonna say something you'll never forget. The difference between one million and one billion in seconds. One million seconds is eleven and a half days. One billion seconds is thirty-seven years. This is a large project. It will create tax revenue for you and Dane County and your schools. Those numbers are ridiculously large. So let's talk about what twenty million dollars of tax revenue, not one time, not a fifty million dollar one time. But an ongoing twenty million dollar contribution through tax revenue. Will provide the opportunity to hire two hundred elementary school teachers. It'll provide the opportunity to create, if you needed them, ten new fire trucks. Put it in terms of things that you need, not things that I'm giving you. These are tax dollars that your community will benefit from if this project goes forward for many, many, many years to come. As we think about responsible growth and shared prosperity. We use words like community and we don't use words like uh bribe. It's just not something that's in our DNA. We'll listen to your unique needs. We will ultimately do our best to help guide the project. And make sure it's as successful as any other project we have. We'll work to provide scholarships and workforce partnerships. We'll work with your universities and your technology companies. And we will in fact preserve as much of the wetlands as we can. Forty acres was a starting point. We'll work with the community to determine the best use of the land that we work on for this project. When we think about sustainability, we heard a lot about water. I'm gonna ask Ryan to take over a little bit and talk about our closed loop system, the water system, and just get some of that out in the oven.
Thank you, Tag. Um, yeah, I think water is obviously a popular topic and one that I think we wanna educate the community on again. So that you can make the right decisions based on the facts. We do truly use a closed-loop system for our group. That cooling system is closed-loop in nature, meaning it does not evaporate water. It is filled one time and unless there is a leak, it is never filled again. It doesn't contain glycol or chemicals that are discharged down the drain. It doesn't discharge to the sewer in any way whatsoever. That water stays in the loop for the life of the system. If we think about the water usage of the facility, what we should really think about is how much water does a facility use for domestic uses? Because that is the only use that we have for water. Sinks, toilets, showers, typical domestic water uses. Our average facility, and I actually went and ran the numbers and pulled the data to make sure that I was giving you something meaningful today. Our average building uses twenty thousand gallons of water in a month. If you think about that in relation to agriculture, one dairy cow uses thirty gallons of water per day. So it's about three hundred dairy cows for the water. All right. Um, also from a sustainability perspective, there was mention of the agreement with the Lion. We wanna bring seven hundred and fifty megawatts in partnership with the Lion of new renewable energy generation. That generation also will not use water. It's solar or wind. There's no water usage associated with that generation. That is about seventy-five percent of the total energy consumption of this project. If we think about energy consumption and how it impacts the rate payers. Which obviously is something that we wanna be transparent about. It is a legitimate concern. As a responsible developer, we position this project on land that intersects with transmission, distribution. And available generation capacity that already exists within Alliance Creek. What that means for the community is there's fixed costs associated with that energy, with that generation, with that transmission, with that distribution. That are already socialized across the rate base. So if you think about it, if we come in and use more of that energy that's available, that already has a fixed cost, it makes the denominator bigger. What does that mean? It helps rates stay stable or decline. And in a place where the energy usage is declining, which is the case in this area right now, more energy usage is better to spread those fixed costs. We talked a little bit about immunity. When you think about QTS, we want you to think about our core values. Um, we think about action, innovation, accountability, character, integrity and trust. Tag mentioned his military service. I also served in the military for ten years in the nuclear navy. Character, integrity and trust are values of our military and they're also values of QTS. We will do the things that we said we would do. We will provide transparency. We will answer the one hundred questions. And hopefully we're answering some of those right now as it relates to water use and energy use. Let's dive in a little bit on this closed-loop water technology. I think this graphic does a really good job of showing what closed-loop system is versus a traditional evaporative system. It is true that all data centers are not created equal. We have a choice in the technology we use and we can choose one that evaporates water or we can choose one that does not. QTS made a choice seven years ago that all of our future development would be closed loop. We value water as a resource and we know clearly this community values water as a resource as well. Evaporative systems, if you read up on them, are technically three to five percent more efficient at heat transfer. Than non-evaporative closed-loop systems. Our data tells us that's actually not true in reality. And so we have made the decision that we're gonna use closed-loop systems. That those are in practicality as efficient in energy consumption as evaporative systems. And like I said before, the only water use you will see from our project is relevant to typical domestic usage.
As a uh point of data for you all, in twenty twenty-four, QTS data centers that use closed loop sys- Closed-loop systems exclusively save one point four billion gallons of water. That would have been evaporated into the environment without our closed-loop system. We keep track of all of our savings in the efficiencies of our data centers.
I know there were also questions about the impact to wetlands, the impact to water flows across the property, the impact to the watershed. And so I'm actually gonna pass it off down to our architect and engineering partners to talk through the concept plan and some of those um impacts and how they're indicated.
Thank you, Ryan. So we've, we've generally referred to this project as being sited west of the interstate and north of the county road B. So we've provided this larger concept plan that has been submitted to the village for more context. As you will see, most of the project is in between uh County Road B on the south, County Road D on the north. And then sited west of the interstate, um and the furthest most it extends is about a half mile west of, of Patton Road. Uh, the image depicts where the initial buildings are to be sited. There's uh six buildings on the screen scattered throughout. Um, the, the campus as shown. We're currently doing due diligence and working with staff to make sure that those buildings are sited such they have minimal impact. On the existing natural resources on the property. Most of the access will occur um from County B, either as we patent or WIBU. And with primary access to these, these spaces off the property.
So the images we have shown on the side are indicative of a typical QTS approach to their administrative spaces. Um, showing the people use of the building. Uh, on the next page, we'll go into some elevations on uh kind of what the, the compute side, the data center portion of this building looks like. And really wanna focus on the methods we utilize to try and reduce the impact from noise. Also just visibility, you know, not wanting to interrupt people's kind of daily lives on what you see every day in the past. So a major focus is how we treat landscaping around these buildings. We've taken efforts to set them back and make roadways. What that does is allows for us to introduce burming, um natural hills that integrated into the site. And then planting vegetation early on in construction to allow that to grow in, uh become that natural buffer. That helps with some of those noise concerns that have been raised. Um, we developed this concept over many years with QTS to locate equipment where it has the least impact on users of the site. Um, as we go forward, we'll look at some of the views, um as you're approaching the site with that utilization of landscaping.
Yeah, we wanted to provide some real perspectives uh from this site specifically as opposed to the, the rendering on the previous page. The, the current views on the far left column are part of perspectives taken from on road today. Uh, but the middle view is intended to represent the burming that we suggested where we would install. It's in the land immediately adjacent to the right away, some elevated ground to help screen the view shed. And then with that initial phase also make, uh, make sure that we're planting that vegetative screening. The, the third uh column is intended on acknowledging it's going to take time for those trees to mature. Uh, what the, what the vision is for that burming and screening. This is more than a three D approach. What we envision, um installing along each of the, the project perimeters. And as you can see, a mix of vegetation and burming helps lessen the impact from the view shed. We understand that this area right now is rolling hills and rolling farm fields. And so this will help, um, like I said, lessen the impact of the view shed.
And in the interest of transparency, we wanna show not just the annexation petition that is before you today, but also a filing being intended in December. So this shows both phase one and phase two of the project to show that transparently. For all sixteen hundred acres that have been mentioned.
In closing, I wanna make one other comment. We talked about the total investment of the project. We talked about the twenty million dollars per year to the Forest Dane County. The schools, et cetera, and tax revenue. We also heard, we've talked openly about the fifty million dollar community commitment fund. That is not a fund that we will control. It is a fund where we would get input. If there's a community center, if there's a curriculum, if there's a need at a school, if there's something that the community needs. This project is not going to be insignificant. It's going to be disruptive. We know that. We wanna be a partner that comes in and says, we know that something is going to go wrong. And we're putting money aside to make sure that you have the resources to either address it or ask us to address it. That is not a bribe. That is being proactive in knowing how these projects go. We're not gonna sit here and tell you it's gonna be perfect. We're not gonna tell you that nothing's gonna go wrong. We are not gonna tell you that we have all the answers. We're gonna tell you that we have twenty-five years of experience. We're gonna tell you that we take seriously our commitments to partnership. And we're gonna tell you when something goes wrong, we're gonna step up, step up and try to fix it on behalf of the community and our partnership. Madam President, we'd be happy to take any questions from you or the Board of Trustees.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for taking the time. I'll open it to the board for questions and um, it looks like Brad is second.
Uh, I can start as well. Uh, thank you for presenting a lot of helpful information. Uh, a- as you're talking about that fifty million dollar investment that you said unknown at this time. Uh, I, I think a lot of people wanna know how that's gonna directly benefit the forest and, and not the economy as a whole. The direct benefits uh that we could see here.
Yeah, um, Madam President and um Brad, thank you for the question. Um, we, we don't have that sorted out yet, just to be honest about it. We, we don't know exactly the requirements of the forest and how the interaction with Dane County will go. We don't pretend to know. What we are offering is the opportunity to have a discussion about a community fund that can be utilized. Our first expectation is you guys would raise your hand and say, there's a project we're working on. Would, could some of that money go towards that project? And that dialogue is something that we would go on and be happy to discuss, discuss with you. Our experience has been, we don't come in and dictate what the money goes towards. But ultimately, we listen and try to come up with a solution that matters. Not dodging the question at all. I don't know the answer to the question as we think about the minimum amount of money that we will put into this fund for your benefit.
And I might offer a little bit more. Many of the projects that come to the forest say to me. You know, how we, how does the tax structure work in Wisconsin? And I know it's different in every single state. And so there's no way these guys know yet until they work with us and talk with Bill, who's good at that. And he, they understand the division of where tax dollars focus.
And Madam President, I would offer, most projects that I have been a part of on that side of the dais have been. I'm asking you for fifty million dollars to fund my project. I'm not doing that. No TIP money, no tax incentives, nothing from the forest or Dane County. We're trying to come and offer you guys the opportunity to, to work with us on this project.
Thank you. Another question? Jim. Trustee Simpson, I'm sorry.
Thank you for the protocol. Sorry about that, uh trustee Corus.
We get a little more.
Thank you. I often have many questions, but I'm gonna keep it to the questions that you brought tonight for me. Um, you mentioned that you're using a closed-loop system and that was the decision which you made about seven years ago. And then you also mentioned that there's some interproduction. I'll say right now, and I'm curious where those are in case. I might get to visit them in the next several months. And sorry to add one more question is that you had your renditions of site of Burman and stuff. And I did notice, like you and I have this search on Google that many of your buildings have under wrought iron fans. I wonder if that's purpose. It does, uh, so that's a slight fine detail. I'm just wondering if that's ever been done.
Yeah, so handing most of this to Ryan on the closed loop system. We made the decision seven years ago to go across our entire portfolio. So all locations built since seven years ago use the closed-loop system. And then we can tell you of all the locations that is, we're in nineteen states, seventy-five buildings. Would be happy to give you that information as a follow-up. If anyone would like to come see one of these in operation, we'd be happy to host you.
Apologies for that. Uh, yeah, to tax point, happy to give you those locations. Some nearby locations would be New Albany, Ohio, um Chicago. Uh, Richmond, Virginia, Manassas, Virginia, Cedar Rapids, Iowa. Um, so significant number of locations we can, we can show you to get an idea done. Uh, I'll pass it on actually to the comment on fencing. The simple answer is yes.
Yes, proposing that wrought iron, as is traditionally seen in the higher security environment. We are looking at options to pull it behind that burn, um to allow that landscaping adaptation to be the focal point so that you're not driving past a never end fence. Uh, so that is part of that building setback and where we sit those backs on is, that's also part of the conversations we have around what open space can be left. Outside of the fence versus inside.
Thank you very much. I'm forward to finding out the whole area.
Thank you. Other questions? Chan? Thank you for the presentation. Um, I did a question. You said there's a phase one and a phase two. And is that all the phases there are? Okay.
Yes, that is all the phases.
Okay, and then the map that you're showing us, those are all of the buildings that would be done by the end of phase two. Or will there be additional?
Only the phase one buildings are shown in the current concept plan.
Um, and then I did have a question. Uh, residents brought up the concern of discharge. Is there any type of discharge that we're getting into our water?
Yeah, it's a great question and, and the answer is no. So I know we spoke specifically about the closed loop, which does not discharge. That water remains in there. But there is no discharge from the facility. The only water that goes in the sewer is for domestic uses like bathrooms, showers, sinks, so typical domestic.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Um, I just have a question of clarification.
Just, just so they know, this is question C, Williams.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'm making your presentation. Uh, two questions. Uh, is the one point five million dollar um partnership that you've done? Is that outside of fifty million dollar investment? And then are you guys, are you planning any other, um, I guess that's that first question. Or are there any other partnerships that you guys are planning uh within Dane County, more in the area? Um, that would be outside of this code of fifty million.
Uh, thank you trustee Williams. The answer is that one point five is outside of that as we've discussed earlier. We don't have current plans for this to be exactly how it would be spent. And your second question is, yes, we have plans. We're starting conversations. We had a conversation with the technical college. We have a conversation going on with uh the union labor uh representatives on on workforce development and other things. And so those conversations are consistent with conversations we have in lots of our communities, and those are just starting.
Thank you.
I have a couple more I'll throw.
Grant, then, okay.
And I'll try to keep it short. Uh the seven hundred jobs that is ever be sustained after construction is completed, what does that look like? Seems unusual for a data center.
Yeah, the question about jobs, which is a a question we get all the time. And if you think about the operation of the data center itself, you've got people that are on security. So each building, if you will, if I give you a building, let's take a hundred people in a building, roughly six buildings. They're pretty large. As we go through, about fifteen of those people are security. So they're on shift. They go around the perimeter. They make sure the security of the of the building is intact. Then you have operations, which I'm going to turn it over to Ryan, who is our operating officer. And he'll talk about the shift work and the numbers of people that are associated with this.
Yeah, thank you for the question, trustee Coors. Appreciate it. Uh from an operations perspective, these buildings do operate twenty four seven. And so there are two shifts of operators. We typically run those on a four, three, three, four, so four days on, three days off. Uh and then there's a front shift and then a back shift for days and nights. Um so from a facility operator perspective, in addition to the twenty four seven security on a campus like this, we expect about two hundred and fifty operators. Who are operating that data center twenty four seven, day in and day out, ensuring the safety, security, and the delivery of our products and services. Um in addition to that, because I know we haven't reached the number seven hundred yet. Uh we also expect uh customer headcount, so our tenant who would lease the space brings in their headcount that handles the IT infrastructure, the telecommunications. What we would call the work that happens inside of the white space uh on the servers.
And then I think I saw that you argue diesel generators, uh how often do they run and what capacity?
Yeah, great question. Um so if we think about diesel generators, they're for emergency backup only. They're not for normal power generation. The power generation normally comes from a line. Uh typical utility reliability is what we call three nine, so ninety nine point nine percent uptime. What that means is those generators are expected to run about eight hours a year.
Thank you.
Eight hours.
All right.
Eight hours per year.
Um trustee Simpson.
Well, did you have a question? I'm I'm sorry. I can't, we usually have more of a curve and I'm hard for you to see that. So can you talk about this noise, this low frequency humming noise, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So a a couple of things. One, the noise will be studied and it will be compliant at the property line with any local regulation, state regulation or federal regulation. I can't tell you exactly what the noise level will be yet because that study has not been completed. I'll pass it to to Dan for further comment.
Yeah, so i- it's all a a variable of the equipment that we put on the building, around the building, when it's running, it kind of the criteria. So we do a study that runs a few different scenarios and gives that output. Uh like you said, it is at the property line because that sound does dissipate. And we do take into account things like screening that you'll see built into our food pop systems. Uh we take into account vegetation and then our best friend is that distance. Um so that is report that we can make available is for once that study is completed. Um because it is all dependent on locations, it has to be a locked in plan to be able to um provide the accurate data of what that desk will be.
Is this a study that's done for the building?
Correct, yes. It's a digital thing.
Thank you. Okay, Jim, did you have a question?
Sure. Uh Madam President, may I offer an additional comment to that question? Trustee Little, um I've been in the data center industry for twenty five years. So take this for where it's coming from. I work inside a data center every day. When I pull up in my car and park outside of the data center, there's no noise. Right in front of the data center, there's no noise. When you go in the front lobby, just so I can explain how this works. We are a landlord for our tenants, so we build a building, we have a lobby, we have a security perimeter, we bring in connectivity. We bring in power, we have security. And inside the building, in the core of the building, is where the servers are. And the servers are running inside the building, as you heard earlier, twenty four by seven, over Christmas, every day. When you walk inside the building, you can't hear the servers. When you walk into the data center, the hall itself, you open the door, you can hear the servers. So the first part of noise is the servers. Nobody in this room will ever hear the servers running. So on the outside of the building, you've got things like generators and they're running for eight hours per year. When they're running at the property line, you will have the data to determine how loud that's going to be for those eight hours per year. So when we talk about noise, it's not from the servers, it's not from the inside, it's from outside. And it's our job to create the right screening, burmin, anticipation, to make sure that we do not disrupt a surrounding community. So I wanted to give you a little bit more sense of what that, what that is and why we're so confident that this is not going to be a problem when we come to your community. And if you were to come to visit a data center, we would show you that exact same line.
Can you allow me? I saw maybe with the resident out in Virginia somewhere who was talking about this low frequency humming noise this. Um it has a health disadvantage. Had moved on second story, then went down to the day for what what are you talking about? And we didn't have that problem. What do you think? Is it something that's on the roof? Um talk to me about that.
Yeah, I've seen, I think, that same YouTube video, so I'm actually familiar with the one that you're talking about. And I think what we're committing is, one, you're not going to have that problem because of the shielding we do to acoustically attenuate that noise so that it does not extend past the property line in a way that is harmful to neighbors. And and two, you'll have a study that shows that that's the truth.
Let me offer a mention. Uh. I was asked earlier today, why doesn't every data center provider use the closed loop water system? I can't answer that, but I can tell you what we would do. If I was sitting in your seat, I would require me to put the screenings, the burms, and the distance in place to avoid that. Let's not even risk that you would have that problem. What you saw in that YouTube video was no screening, no burms, nothing in between the citizen and the noise production. We won't do it. You should require us to make sure we don't do it. And as I've heard earlier, you know, we don't want to come in here and make all these promises and then you guys vote and it doesn't happen. I will help you guys require us to do that in the application that you will approve.
Okay. Okay, one more. And then if anyone else had a question, who thought?
Do you have glycol or something in the water in the closed loop system because I heard country and erosion and rust along?
Yeah, it's a great question. You would think, you know, Madison probably gets quite cold in the winter. Maybe you would want glycol for freeze protection purposes. The answer is no, we don't put glycol in our closed loop system. And the reason why is we mitigate that in a different way. Glycol actually causes the water to be less efficient at heat transfer. And so less efficient means more energy usage, uh which we don't want to do. And so what we do instead is we insulate the piping. I think you you heard some union members here today, so the insulators will be out there insulating that piping to make sure it doesn't freeze. We also use our control system to crack open the valves and run flow through that piping. If you think about, you know, how do you keep your pipes from freezing at home? You run the sink a little bit, right? So same thing, we have constant flow through the piping, so it doesn't freeze, and so we don't work glycol. The other pieces, we also put uh what they call heat tape on that piping. And so it is, it is heat traced to prevent freezing as well. And all those things allow us to not just start calling.
Thank you. Thank you. Other questions? Trustee Simpson.
Thank you. One more question is for similar concern but different lighting. I'll say we have a lot of standing ordinances where we call like dark skies or cut off lighting and I've been told by is. They feel that I am sure security lighting is an issue that you address, but again, composite compromise of those cut off screening.
I'll hand it down to the experts, but I will tell you, we have a project in Hillsboro, Oregon, where they have specific requirements about colors and screening and heights and lighting and noise. We will comply with all of the requirements, but more importantly, we want to do something that works for your community, and we could talk a little bit about that.
Uh yeah, that dark sky and a shit compliant fixtures are in use. That is another one where similar to the acoustic study, you know, we can show those line levels and what they'll be. Um but as a baseline, they've adopted a fixture that meets that cutoff. Um if nothing else, it's more energy efficient not to be lighting more. So we will absolutely focus lighting where it's needed for security purposes, but those fixtures do meet that lines so that we're not lighting upward. Um to meet migratory bird requirements, so it's definitely something we put into our site design process to ensure we're being responsible in that standpoint.
Thank you. Any other? Yeah. Any other questions? The one thing that continually is brought up, and I know the community doesn't like it when I say, are you sure that will apply to this data center? Is what's happening in other data centers? Can you talk a little bit about the comparisons that are being made um with other data centers and all the horror stories for them?
With um, I'm sorry, Madam President, with regards to what aspect?
Oh, they're complaining about noise and air pollution and all sorts of things. And I suspect from my experience in the energy industry, that those are projects that were built quite a while ago.
Yeah, thank you. Um there's been a lot of advancements in data center technologies over the years, uh making them more efficient, uh or resource efficient or noise mitigated. Um we have two thousand people that work for QTS. They all go to work every day at a data center. And it is our responsibility to make sure that it is a pleasant experience for each one of them. We have customers that come to our data centers every day. So when I hear stories like that, it's an older data center, it's a unique data center, it's a one off, it's a less reputable company. It's somebody that doesn't have a track record, someone that doesn't hire the right um consultants and and partners to build. It's someone that doesn't have twenty five years of experience and sitting in these meetings and understanding what happens when something goes wrong. I think the bad apples spoiled the whole cart. And we will be a good apple. We will do the things that we said we're going to do. So I can't speak to each one of the ones that are running through your head right now. I can only tell you of the experience that we have and what we bring to the communities that we enter.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Anything else? If not, I stay very tired looking forward, so. Correct. Um we will thank you. We look forward to working with you and the community on all these issues. And appreciate all of the people coming with comments. We are going to have to move on because they're going to give me talent if I don't get a budget full of time, so.
Madam President, Madam Board Members, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right. Fresh face. Okay. We are moving forward with item nine point one. Keep your conversations outside, please. All right, here we go.
Here we go.
Discussion on hold action regarding resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh five. A resolution to reaffirm the village of the forest budget and financial policies and to establish the twenty twenty six operating budget for the general fund and special revenue. Debt service, capital projects, and enterprise funds. And the subsidy for the deForest Public Library budget and for the village of the forest. Dane County, Wisconsin, in conjunction with the budget being established to levy taxes and to set forth the local mill rate. It's a mouthful, Carol.
I know it is.
But bring us along.
Well, the only thing I want to point out is, um as you know, a month ago, when we came forward with a budget draft that we used for the public hearing. Um a lot of things continued to change as we go along, so we did incorporate a few more adjustments as we learned new information. So the draft that you had in your packet last week was slightly different than the one we used for the public hearing notice. But um for the most part, it it tends to be, often tends to changes that affect the the funds that don't impact your local tax levy or the local tax rate. Um there were some changes, however, that did affect the tax rate, but all we had to do was um adjust the amount that we're planning on taxing on our equipment placement program. We just adjusted that amount in order to make it all still fit and basically come out to the same um the same impact to the average homeowner, which was just under two percent like we had showed in the public hearing notice. So we are able to kind of just shuffle things around to to make things more accurate and still make it fit within the the rate that you saw that five point eight six, five dollars eighty six cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. That was what was in the public hearing notice. It's still at that rate. And so just to let you know, there are some adjustments that that were rolled through.
To the budget.
To the budget draft that was in your packet last Thursday.
But not to the mill rate.
Right, the mill rate stays the same, your impact to your average homeowner stays the same, but there are some changes that happened. If you look fun by fun, you will see some shuffling that has gone on just to keep things accurate as I learn more. We um we got the MMSD rates for twenty twenty six, so that impacts the sewer fund. We um got the tax levy amounts for all of the other taxing jurisdictions that for the most part impacts your TIP districts. So there's a lot of things that changed and we rolled them through and it impacts, like I said, other funds that don't necessarily impact the tax rate. And anything that did happen that impacted the tax rate, we offset against that amount that goes towards the equipment replacement fund.
Thanks. Um you've all seen the budget a number of times, but I would ask if anyone has questions for Carol. Trustee Simpson.
I would say you have questions for Carol, but also my people are great. We presented with a water study and I noticed that a lot of them in that water study was talks about the Cheltenham Creek Water Tower or one of the water tower implementations. And I wanted to thirty five thousand hours. That would be for some maintenance, I'm wondering if that is included in the budget and then found it would be beneficial to be in the budget for next year.
Sorry, the thirty, you just, what was the dollar?
Thirty five thousand is a Cheltenham Creek Water Tower study. That was like the cash to the water.
I think that's from an older, uh so we, we're constantly doing those things. Uh it's, if it's warranted, we have it in the budget for next year. Uh if it needs, if it still has time, so we need to do that again, then we'll do that at that time. So I don't recall that being in the budget this year.
Okay, I guess then, was there maybe great comment?
No. I didn't find it, but I think it's a a document that was in the appendix that was just citing a previous uh recommendation for maintenance on that tower, which I think you did. Yes. Yeah, so I think it's already complete.
Well, that's what we. Thank you very much.
Okay.
That is one of the picture of five and you.
No, that's, that's a good question. Other questions? Anybody? Okay. Well. You have so, okay, yeah. Trustee.
Alan, we've been together for six years, Steve. Are you kidding me? We need to take a break, Alan. I may come back when Jane remembers who the hell I am. Um, I'm sorry.
I'll pay for that.
Um, so I just had a question previously during comments. Um, so I just had a question previously during comments. Um, and then forgive me if I'm missing this, but did he address the library? And never asked. Um, and if we did, how?
Uh, okay, so we do not really allow the department heads to come forward and just say, here's what we want our wages to be. Bill and I have that discussion and kind of come to you with a recommendation on what we think that across the board increases should be. So the library is included in that and they initially were put into the budget at a three point seven five percent increase like everyone else. Um, their request to you tonight is to go above and beyond that. I did not even know they were gonna come forward with that request, so I can't tell you anything more about that. Uh, that was so surprised to me too, that they were gonna come forward and ask for more. So I did not have the opportunity to really study that request or give you any more information about it. So as far as how you want to handle that request, that's up to you to decide what you want to do with that.
I was just asking.
But that does not.
Think some things and I just wanted to know what we were ready to wait and um.
Okay, that's obnoxious. Yeah, I was just wondering like what we're discussing tonight, address that.
It does not.
Okay.
Now that's my, the salary and you like the labor costs in here for the library are the same as all the other departments. And so what they're requesting is something above and beyond that.
Okay.
Bill?
Yeah, you uh, oh. Carol correct, but then when they are requesting for you to read the uh, the email letter for designing for this budget. If too many do want to include mid or portion of this budget would have to be uh, departmentary. That's what we should have that we presented as the way of the head. Uh, so. When Carol says, you know, the part of the library budget that we've concerned three point seven five percent increase as a standard uh, general wage increase for all staff, which matches the relation. Uh, what library is talking about in regards to what called the government, it was the reasons for catching wages up for those employees that fall under equivalent legal coverage and that ways for both particles are the hourly employees. Now you as a village board do not control where those dollars go to once you allocate the budget amount to the library. If I say statute, you're not allowed. And so I think that's the decision point that this board needs to make is if, uh, first and foremost regards to the amounts that uh, as in the budget budget will shift whether you want to go above um, that amount uh, or if you want to say you're the same, if you want to stay in the same amount, you add shifts items. The, the way that the budget is situated right now, um, we don't necessarily have an issue in particular forward, but uh, let me. Uh, the issue that we have is expenditure restraint.
Say that again.
So we don't necessarily have an issue running up against the lobby women. Uh, additionally, yeah, there's an expenditure restraint. Uh, and so right now, our expenditure budget is at the very top that we can't go above that. If you go above that, we risk losing our portion of our share of money. Uh, which is essentially hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we give. If you were to manage to say um the sole of the eight days of whatever we want to have, there would be our recommendation that you cut from another portion of the position to continue spending to be that best, except for the event. And so um, we've heard a couple different numbers that I think I heard earlier, thirty thousand dollars and then I heard about fifty thousand dollar sixty thousand dollar amount. Question is how much? And as part of your reflection, uh, we're buying for if you want to do that right for the finance director, myself will be able to adjust that. Uh, just a little bit about the carryover, uh. The second part of our request was for a carryover for this year's budget. Uh, I can let Carol talk a little bit about how carryovers were. Uh, it would be our preference that they be able to spend that much bucks. So probably this year they carry.
Sorry, I can't. It would be your preference. What?
It would be our preference for us to be like spend those dollars this year. I mean, if we carry over next year, it's still imperative.
Okay, yeah, let me address that carryover comment because we have an agreement with the library. So every year at the end of the year, we look at um, any labor costs that are not spent. We take that and we put that into our future benefits fund. So that money goes to help fund that future benefits fund. Any operating costs that they don't spend goes into their library special revenue fund. And that is their money to spend then how they want. So.
With the thirty thousand with the?
The thirty thousand. We don't know what their, what their unspent budget dollars are going to be for this year. I don't know what that amount is going to be yet. They're just basically saying anything that's left over at year end, we want to give us. You know, to carry over to next year. And I'm thinking, well, everything that's left over is already designated to go one place or another. So I'm not sure what they even are asking for.
So my understanding is that and I, and I think it was the, the library board members confirmed it. Now, I asked Brad, um, the, the book money wouldn't be expended that's in their budget because the supplier went bankrupt, left them high and dry.
Right.
Now they're faced with not being able to get their material, the new supplier until into January.
Yeah.
So the money is currently in their budget.
Mm-hmm.
Can they ever not carry that and pay that invoice? Or pay it in advance or do something?
If they have that money left over at year end, the agreement we have with them is we're gonna put it into their special revenue library fund. Which they can then spend how they want. So in a sense, they already have, we already have an agreement with that that would allow them to do that over if you said next year if they need to.
Okay, did they?
We do it every year. I mean, I guess I, I assumed Jan would know that, but I can have a conversation with her and help her understand that that's, it's going to be available to them because it gets put into their special revenue donation fund.
To Shidra.
So.
I know your first name.
Thank you.
That's another man. Nice man can change if I wanted to. Um, so Carol, just because there's so much ambiguity and so many questions that we can't answer. And respectfully for, for Jammer and, and giving her an opportunity to really circle the wagons and give us the information that she needs. I, I think it would be prudent for us to just tangle this, right?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, not the whole budget comment.
Yeah.
Jesus.
So you can, you can approve the budget as it is and we can do either a budget amendment to twenty twenty five. If we need to do something related to the library's leftover funds and carryover or whatever. We can do a budget amendment for that. And then we can do a separate budget amendment for twenty twenty six to address the additional funds they're asking for, for their wages if you should choose to go along with that. And then we can come with more information as to how they're going to use those funds and hopefully get you a, a more detailed.
That's where I was going because I need to make educated decisions. So we just don't have the answers. And this was this was a hail Mary at the end of the quarter that somebody caught and I'm like, dang. So I, I, I really like what you just proposed because the library does amazing things, right? And the library is a safe place for our community members. And so I do want that to stay.
Yeah.
Um, but at the same time, I don't want to supersede agreements that are in place that have been in place for years and in processes that we have followed.
Yep.
Um, so I really like what you're proposing so that we can one honor the library, the staff, and have a vision going on. That we can honor constituents' budget, meaning we pass.
Right.
Um, and that way everyone can have a seat at the table.
Yep.
So I really appreciate that.
Yeah, that is certainly one way you could handle it.
If I might add though, over the last couple of years, this board has all but promised the library that we would help to bring their professional staff up to competitive salaries. And it's my understanding, that's what they're gonna do with that money. Um, we are losing library staff left and right to our neighbors who pay more, but they wait for us to train them. And they, they, you know, wait to get the best ones. And then they steal them. And that's very expensive too. And that, that hurts the integrity of our library. So, you know, I think we can't ignore that. Um, I can't, you know, most of the people that were in this room use our library for one reason or another. So I don't want to go back on that agreement as informal as it may have been with the library staff. And I remember the last time we had a discussion about well, we can go this far this time and we'll get it, you know, we'll pick it up another year. So I encourage us to look at that as a very real thing. Yes, Bill, and then go ahead, Jen.
I was just gonna say, oh, my opinion, I remember going I guess I gotta be a little bit closer. I remember my first year here, I, I dive deeper into the budget and I remember coming up with a number of lines. I'm sorry, I don't remember.
That was before my time.
But I, I had like six, twelve lines I looked at the historical data and I felt like the library could have pulled some of those. And that I didn't, I was not prepared as a new trustee of course that was gonna come. There was a number of people that spoke and I learned what Bill said tonight because like we are only really approving the total dollar. We cannot look at fine items. So that being said, it's like I don't mind looking at their salary study and why we need the uh, individuals for the salary study. I, I'd like to see that data. But I think that also opens up their budget too, as far as like if we're only approving one, pretty much one line item for the library. I think they gotta also show why they can't move things around in their budget. So I, I offer that a continual report to me with what we have in the budget and we can address the possible issues in the future.
Others? Bill?
So I think you have corrected my wrong here, but even, even if they were to offer, you know, comparable studies of the wages we still, and we are considering angry somehow, we still can't dictate how the library sets the budget. And I think to adventure that direction would be challenged. Uh, so and it's more than just I think, uh, potential, the utility behind it is, uh, it's behind it. Uh, that will have to be grown. If this board tonight wishes to make an amendment uh, to the resolution or a change in head, whether it's the full amounts of, of the request or a portion of that amount to the request. I think you can do it tonight by approving the resolution and again, authorizing finance directors to make those adjustments in the budget for whatever amounts that you see fail to the library. My suggestion is that we should, we would then adjust uh, the expenditure amount transferred from the general fund to the better place of fund. With the caveat that uh, as we are trying to build up that by place of fund in fund four hundred, that fund balance uh, there'd be a fund balance transfer of our consideration to continue to build that for replacement, replacement fund in the future. Uh, again, this is where all those that uh, were not part of budget discussion early on. Uh, we created a equipment replacement fund, start of fund four hundred, uh, way two years ago now. Uh, to help finance um, equipment that are shorter life than, so your laptops, your computers, your vehicles. Uh, we finance that personally through um property tax and transfers from the general fund. Um, revenue sources from auctions, uh, grand dollars and borrowing. And so our financial goal was strategy here is to try to reduce the borrowing for these items as much as possible. We don't want a ten year note on a year end. Uh, and so in this case, we are literally taking from all to pay bigger. Uh, but we have very small and, yeah, the future.
Okay. So we have a couple of options before us. Um, one is to approve the budget as it came and ask a second thing is to direct the staff to work with the library to register additional information and to work out a solution to this problem. Because I think we all know we want to protect the library too. And um, that's important. Where are we? Jan?
Only almost to approve the budget with an amendment to allow the finance director to work with the library. Any additional money that they need.
Okay.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comment?
In that motion, is there a specific dollar amount that you want in there or just?
I was gonna say, do you want the actual amendment or do you want me to just work on coming up with an amendment and bringing the amendment back to a later date? Yes. Okay, yeah. Directing staff to work with the library can come back to the amendment.
Okay.
So my question was to clarify, I think it's, I just want to clarify again, we're more or less approving the budget as originally and then something in the future you'll come back for.
Yes.
But Jen's. I know you've been under a lot of pressure, so we appreciate that. All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
Just Seidra was the second on that?
Okay, yes, thank you.
When you do do that, can you help us understand or ascertain the difference between what's left over in their budget um, that goes to their operation pot and their goals?
Yeah, I will definitely come back with more detailed information and help you guys understand how that all works.
So you'll kind of stand unquestioned the journey out.
Yeah. Yeah. I think we actually have three, three separate issues. We kind of have the additional wage information that they want. We have what they want to do with this carryover. And then we also have the idea that we're really approving a total dollar amount for the library. So it sounds like you want to kind of look at the entire budget request, not just the salary portion. Because we're really approving one large number and then they're kind of allowed to do with that number, whatever they want, right? It's not like we're approving the salary information separate from the operating.
No, unless we come back to the amendment later on.
Right.
Yeah, I would say my third question is not really a question for you. I'm gonna assert your discipline.
Just information to bring.
We're gonna get the part ourselves to ask for the team. If you have additional salary can be encapsulated and there is the operational.
Yeah, so I'll just make sure to include the, the total budget request along with that increase that they're requesting. I'll just make sure you see the whole picture.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we have a motion. Yes, Brett.
I'll just make a comment on what Jim said. I, I feel like I heard it was inappropriate for us to look at the budget that way. Uh, so, so maybe ask Jan, is there a way that she should money around in other parts of the budget to make that sixty thousand dollar difference, uh, instead of looking at the entire budget ourselves at the end all? Does that make sense?
I think that'll be part of the discussion that, that they have. We'll, we'll, we'll work on it. Um, we don't want to leave them high and dry, but we understand reality. So we have a motion and a second. If there's no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a budget. I can leave here with my head up. Thank you. I know the amount of work that you guys put into this budget. So thank you. All right.
Fine.
We will continue, yes, come forward, guys, with nine point two. We will continue, yes, come forward, guys, with nine point two. A discussion regarding, a discussion, possible action regarding ordinance, no, one, sorry. Wait. Just usual, yeah, let me. Discussion regarding the water supply service area plan as required by state statute NR eight five four. Judd, wow, great.
We're out of water.
We're out of water, so.
Here, I didn't touch this one. No.
I'm gonna answer Jim's question. Uh, we did find thirty five thousand you were talking about in the appendix. That actually was done in twenty fourteen, so we've added that comment or adjust the report to say that 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 spot was done. We we have to, we have, we're required every five years to pull up the tanks and check for corrosion and other things. So uh, the Anderson Road Tower isn't standing.
We don't want no leak.
Um, and then just uh, in the budget that you just passed, uh, as a reminder, we did uh, have in there to do a test well of well seven that's located at Innovation Drive. Uh, it's out of place, corner of Bottom Blazing Innovation. It's actually be our fifth well, and if we if it tests well and we can put an actual well there. Um, but it's technically by the NR standards are seven twelve, so that's part of this budget that you approved for next year as well. If you have questions, we're here to answer for this. If you have comments you wanna supply.
Questions regarding the water supply matter. Yes, Jim?
Question very common, I guess, in front of anything, is that there was a location shown for the future of our towers. And there was one on the north side that I thought probably should be shifted on more west than I was showing. Even I see you're counting along very good on the top of one.
Yeah, I would simply say they're very, very vague in terms of where we're showing. It's just those real hypothetical locations, so.
Yeah, I just question the location shown for, I think he'll know, I'm not saying it's country due. In fact, that's our, and to me, that's sort of the more of the way I'm abilities. I'm doing better, especially from these other subjects as far as.
Yeah, I agree. We'll we'll make that shift, but we honestly didn't put a ton of thought into where those were going. I'm just scrolling. I love those stuffs.
Second.
There's no motion. There's no motion on this.
Jane said.
I said there was.
Sorry. Nope. This will be back December second.
When my agenda says possible action, you get action.
We want to allow comment time. So if nobody has comments now, but they wanna send us comments, you can send them.
Yeah.
But otherwise, uh, it's back in December second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you waiting and being here through all of what's gone on. So thank you, guys.
Not a problem.
Um, also, they've been involved in setting all of this up tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mugging, hauling, moving, so.
We gotta do items by ten, right?
Yeah, so we're moving on. Nine point four.
What? No, no. Thirty, we're late.
Nine point three. Yeah, all right.
What?
All right. We're getting to it. All right. Discussion impossible action regarding ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three seven. If ordinance amending section nine point oh seven three B two of the DeForest Municipal Code relating to fees for dog licenses.
Motion to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify, or does anybody have a question?
I have a question.
All right.
Uh, so do automatic rules come out on the dog? People who have already licensed their dog?
Yes, the people that have already, we have a program once, uh, everybody that has currently like has a dog licensed. I believe the email's coming out November twentieth.
Okay.
So in a couple of days, a reminder for people to license their dog. This ordinance is the county has increased the fees for bus paid, unutored dogs and puppies by two dollars. So to keep in in line there, we are asking for this to be approved.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point four. You gotta do your job here.
Okay, I'll read them.
Discussion impossible action regarding resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh six. A resolution authorizing the village president and clerk to execute a limited right of way use license. This is Chief and Judd.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions? Jim?
I just, I guess I look at the nail on it as far as like where's the stuff because I do a number of these for work. And they call like her bull, bull doc, they see her minutes, and I'm wondering how much of the difference this is because one thing that I didn't like about this agreement that I think I really need to revoke the law, you can see her as generally can tell they're moving in a kind. And then there was some discussion on that in there and I just probably did it in a paragraph, but I didn't quite feel like it got to the point that said, you can totally take it all, that makes sense.
That's what you said. You don't think the agreement allows us to do that.
I didn't think it quite went there. There was a file where it said that a cookie follow up to it, but I was really glad this point really mattered to me. So they they don't hold them, they don't cut it after reimbursement.
They just involve the people, they go to chairs, it kind of spot there.
Jim, most of us can't hear you.
Sorry. What I was saying that I both agree with the paragraphs and I know there's a lot of time about if we want it or that it'd be removed, but I don't think that it quite stated that they couldn't ask for reimbursement. So I thought we should maybe have a sentence or two saying that just or you don't have to reimburse.
Again, we can't, we can't stop them from asking if you'd say no. I mean, they're not entitled to reimburse with that.
All right. All right.
Just seem to be following, then we'll explain. But what I mean, so I need to.
All right. Any other comments or questions? If not, we have a motion and a second, I believe. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on. Nine point five. Discussion impossible action regarding resolution twenty twenty five dash one oh seven. A resolution authorizing participation in the preparation of a cooperative plan between cities of Madison and Middleton, villages of DeForest and Wannakee, and the town of Westport pursuant to Wisconsin statute section sixty six point oh three oh seven. Well, that's a lot. Um, we discussed this briefly, I think, once before.
Yes, we did.
Um, so let's. If if you'll note, the next item is if we want, we can go into closed session to discuss the terms. Um, but let's hear from Bill and Al first.
Yeah, this this resolution is set piece authorizing the start of the process that usually starts the discussion that leads to the agreement that's already in the budget. But the standard procedure for boundary agreements requires each municipality to adapt this compromise and resolution.
Okay.
Then there's a sixty day waiting period before you can have a public hearing on the plan. And then another sixty day waiting period before it can be filed with the O A approval. So this is, this is simply just saying we're gonna be, we're gonna be part of this plan and talk about it frequently. That's all this resolution says.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, so then do we need the closed session? Or anything?
No, the the agreement's been provided in case, you know, to discuss the terms of the agreement has been wrapped in those forms. If you don't wanna get into that personal future, do that. If you don't feel that there's a need to discuss it in secret, as we can get in the way of argument decision, then it would be a closed session.
Well, why don't we do that when we get more information on it? Okay. Okay, everybody comfortable?
Yep.
All right. With that then, um, communications, check register was in your packet. Many commission board reports were in your your packet um, with minutes. Um, committee and commission board minutes were in your packet. Um, does anybody need or have a desperate need to give an update or we could do that? All right. People are saying, go ahead. Waiting for Jim's opposition? No?
No, he not.
I'm sorry, we need to.
All right, thank you, Jim. All right. So police commission minutes, all of that stuff is in your packet. President's report, I'll keep it brief, but we have to officially appoint. Yes, I'll give you a report in a minute. We're gonna take action on Brad first, do you mind? All right, I know, I'm out of order. Appointment to the DeForest area board, public library of Brad Cords, our unit's trustee, and he attended his first meeting, so I thought we better get him confirmed. So I would entertain a motion to approve Brad.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a couple of seconds. Um, I think Colleen was first.
That's why I was first.
All right, is everyone, any comments, questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Twelve point one. That would be Bill with DCCVA.
Oh, I believe that uh, DCCVA, uh, that's last week. And and that was first also, we were, we hosted that meeting, uh, somebody that means that we share a little bit of information about our impact development. We're all here and the rest of the person. There were, uh, presentations, uh, but I think the one that was the most, I think, important to the logic. Uh, the class of, um, county lord chair, county mouse, uh, to first gather a transport, uh, the data centers. Uh, the task force includes members of townsships, uh, municipalities, uh, and subject matter experts. But it's intended to, uh, take some time. I think they're talking about a whole year to take a look at. Providing guidelines and and being advisory to data center, for those specifically, and they come. So just know that that's out there. They requested that the county cities and villages, uh, from two members to that passport. Uh, and I believe of those members, one is from the village of Cottage Grove. And then the other one is for, um, the village of Short. And so, um, you may hear about that task force, um, from those folks that are interested in data centers. Uh, it does sound like, uh, everyone in the counties is into this. As all say about that, there's some, I'll see what can.
I don't wanna say anymore about it. Um, anyway, we will see what happens. They they've got quite a timeline that they're gonna work at things and, um, we'll see where it goes. Anything else from you, Bill? Yeah, okay. With that, I would, um, ask if there's any other business to lawfully come before this vote. And if not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned at nine forty five P M. Thank you.